The Commerce City Northern Infrastructure General Improvement District meeting of April 16th, 2012 will now come to order. Will the Secretary please call the roll?
And for those council members, please note that there is no buttons to push for this meeting. You won't be pushing buttons till your next meeting. So, Mr. Ford.
Here.
Mr. Moreno. Mr. Benson. Ms. Carson. Mr. Teeter.
Here.
Mr. Bullock.
Here.
Mr. McElDowney.
Here.
Ms. Elliott.
Present.
Mr. Douglas.
Present.
Sir, you have a quorum.
Thank you. Let the record show that Board Member Carson and Board Member Moreno are absent this evening from the GID Board of Directors meeting. First item of need here is the approval of the minutes. I'm open for a motion to approve the minutes of March 19th. I don't have any lights.
Okay. Move to approve the minutes of March 19th?
Is there a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the minutes of March 19th, GID Board of Directors meeting. All those approved? Yes, sir.
Board Member absent, Councilman, or Board Member Benson was absent.
Okay. Then...
I believe. Let me check that. Yes. Benson, Carson, Moreno, and McElDowney were absent.
Okay. Then I would need them to abstain from voting, correct?
Right.
So, Mr. McElDowney and Board Member Benson, please abstain from voting.
We can approve those minutes, sir.
Why is that?
We don't have enough people to vote on those minutes.
Yes, we do. We have five.
We said Benson and McElDowney. One, two, three, four, five.
Yes, sir. We still have five.
We still have five. Where's the other two? Thanks, Bill.
Okay. We still have a quorum. I would ask that Mr. Board Member Benson and Board Member McElDowney abstain from voting. Motion and second has been made. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried. Next item on the agenda is GID Ordinance 151-12.
Mr. Mayor, actually, that was a motion to allow them to abstain. We really need...
We already had a motion and a second on the floor, so I just asked them to abstain from voting on that motion. Is that okay?
If the minutes show...
Is that okay? Next item is the ordinance 151-12. This ordinance was presented to the board at its March 19th meeting. It was approved on first reading unanimously and is now on the consent agenda as a rule. We generally do not have further discussion on consent agenda items. However, since there is no other item listed under the consent agenda, I would like to know the board's desire. Mr. Bullock.
Move to approve the agenda item?
Is there a second? Mr. McElDowney.
Second.
Um, Mr. Yeah, can he? Since he wasn't here on the 19th, he can still second the motion tonight, right? I have a motion and a second to approve this as a consent agenda item. Is there any discussion? Mr. Benson.
This $2 million is to the CIPP fund. That's the $2 million for Joliet that's on our city council agenda. Is that the same $2 million?
Yes.
I guess I could just repeat what I said in the past. I don't think that the GID has got enough money to be giving it away to things that benefit the whole city. This is something that ought to be the full city's responsibility and not just that of the GID. I mean, it's a bad precedent to set, having the city borrow money from our little northern infrastructure, GID. I've gotten emails about this. How could you vote for this? Well, I didn't vote for it, but here we are. Anyway, that's how I feel about it. Let's have a vote.
Okay. Any other discussion? Saying none.
This will be a roll call vote.
Okay. Mr. Attorney, you want to read the title?
Title reads, "Ordinance GID 151-12: An Ordinance Advancing the 2012 Budget of the Commerce City Northern Infrastructure General Improvement District (NIGID) by Reappropriing a Portion of the Unencumbered Fund Balance of the NIGID in the Amount of $291,700 and Transferring a Portion of the Unencumbered Fund Balance of the NIGID in the Amount of $80,443 to the Water Acquisition Fund and $2 million to the CIPP Fund for a Total Amount of $2,372,143 and Authorizing the Expenditure thereof."
Thank you. If there be no other discussion, I'll ask for a roll call vote.
Should we note that Ms. Carson just came in for the record? And how do you want to handle that? Do you want her to vote on this item?
This is what we're voting on.
I guess I'll inquire of Councilwoman Carson. Are you, do you want to vote on this particular item, or do you want the vote to proceed and then announce your arrival?
Let it proceed.
Okay. Mr. Benson?
No.
Mr. Teeter?
Yes.
Mr. Bullock?
Yes.
Mr. McElDowney?
Yes.
Ms. Elliott?
Yes.
Mr. Douglas?
No.
Mr. Ford?
Yes.
And the vote is, one, two, three, four, five ayes, two noes.
Okay. Thank you. Motion is carried. The ordinance is passed. If there be no further business to come before the GID Board of Directors this evening, we are adjourned. Now we'll open...
Hold on, hold on.
No problem.
You've got to give me a minute.
When you're ready. Are you ready?
Not yet. Just a moment.
Okay.
I've got to do some system movements here.
No problem. Just let me know.
Now, sir, I am ready.
Thank you. I'll now call the meeting of the city council of April 16th to order. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Yes. And for this one, all your buttons should be functioning, so if you will press your buttons as present when I call your name. Mayor Ford.
Here.
Mayor Protem Moreno. Councilman Benson.
Here.
Thank you, sir. Councilwoman Carson.
Present.
Councilman Teeter.
Here.
Thank you. Councilman Bullock.
Here.
Councilman McElDowney.
Here.
Your present button, sir? Thank you. Councilwoman Elliott.
Present.
Councilman Douglas.
Present.
Mr. Mayor, you have a quorum.
Thank you. Let the record show that the only one not here at this time is Mayor Protem Moreno, and if he joins us after the executive session, we'll make note to the record. First item on the agenda is to go into executive session. What are the desires of the council? Mr. Bullock?
Move to go into executive session pursuant to CRS 24-6-402, parentheses, "for," parentheses, "e," for the purpose of instructing negotiators concerning Salazar litigation. Executive session, CRS 24-6-402, parentheses, "for," parentheses, "e," for the purpose of instructing negotiators concerning the city manager's employment contract. Executive session, CRS 24-6-402, parentheses, "for," parentheses, "b," for the purpose of receiving legal advice concerning oil and gas issues.
Thank you. Councilman Teeter? I have a motion and a second.
I'll second that.
I have a motion and a second to go into executive session. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried. We will be back prior to 6:30. We're at 6:30 to start the regular meeting. I'll note it when we come back, because I've already closed.
Yes, sir.
I appreciate your patience.
Thank you. I will put, what I normally do is I...
Is that, or do you want me to not post it? And do we have a final version?
We don't have a final version.
Okay. But we're good, this is gonna happen.
It's too bad Phil's gonna have to stick around the next two hours.
That's fine, I just wanna make sure that when I show it, it's up.
I'll call the meeting back to order. Thank you all for being here this evening. I would like the record to reflect that the Mayor Pro Tem Dominic Moreno is present at this point. I would ask everybody to stand and join me for a moment of silence followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Yes, Mr. Moreno?
For the moment of, for the moment of silence, if we could keep in our thoughts and prayers, Andres Ramirez, he was a classmate who tragically lost his life a few days back in a, in a workplace accident. So if we could keep him and his family in our thoughts and prayers.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Will the staff please pass around the microphones so the audience can introduce themselves?
Pam Sprattler.
Eddie Thomas.
Danny Thomas.
Guillermo Serna.
Thel McCall.
Carolyn Keith, Parks and Recreation.
John Howard, Information Technology.
Roger Tanklberg, Finance.
Marissa Chavez.
Gail Bodkin.
Chex Lanier, Police Department.
Ms. Ryan Cordero, Government Relations.
Chris Kramer, Community Development.
Greg Graham, Assistant City Attorney.
Phil Barber.
Thank you. I would like to remind everybody in the audience to please turn off your cell phones for the duration of the meeting. First item on the agenda is citizen communication. When I call you up, please come to the podium, state your name and address for the record. You'll be given three minutes to address the council. First on the list is Marissa Chavez. Please come forward. Good evening.
Marissa Chavez, 4935 Adams Street. Good morning, or good evening, city council members. I'm a junior who attends Adams City High School. I've been involved in student council since my freshman year. This year is the year the junior class is planning prom. Prom is April 28th and we still have minor expenses to pay such as the DJ, the photographer, etc. The junior class and myself are trying extremely hard to make this a memorable night for all Adams City High School students. So in regards to this, I would like to ask community members and city council members for any donations to help contribute to our prom. Thank you.
Thank you. Council have any remarks for Marissa Chavez? Mr. Moreno?
Thanks, Marissa. Wasn't too long ago that I was part of the junior class planning our senior prom. Where can we make contributions to the school, to you directly?
Either, you could either write checks to the school or me.
Okay, and would we be able to drop those off at Adams City High School?
Yeah.
Great.
Great. Mr. Bullock?
If we were to drop them off at the school, do we make them in the name of the junior class prom?
Yeah.
Okay, and just junior class prom donation?
Yeah, you could put the class of 2013.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
We will all look for some support for you. Thanks for coming in to see, oh, Mr. Douglas, 'cause something.
Yes, thank you. How much are you guys short?
Um, like a thousand dollars.
Thousand dollars, okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you for coming in this evening. Next, Thel McCall. Good evening.
Hello and good evening, Mayor Ford and city council and city staff. I've been observing the city and the-
One, one second. Name and address, please.
Oh, sorry.
No problem.
Thel McCall, 5841 East 67th Place, Commerce City.
Okay, go right ahead.
I've been observing the city councils in the city for the past few years. And even though there's been a lot of good done, I've seen pitfalls that they have fallen in. The city's made rules like the weed height and how many in a house. And I'd like to know why the city can't enforce this without pitting neighbor against neighbor. Also, why can't the city talk about the city as a whole instead of the north part and the south part? We are one whole city and I'm tired of listening to this divided bit. Another thing, I watched NASCAR leave our city because a small group of people started a conflict. And wasn't, and NASCAR was not allowed to even go to city council to have a meeting. I hope that the city council now gives more objective to the city, to the people that would like to come into our city with a business. And I think you need to study the stuff like with this oil fracking. You need to study it, go to people that know a little bit about it, find out what the good and the bad is. Because you need to think about what's best for us and the city, the residents and the city, not just a personal vendetta. Thank you.
Hang on, there might be some folks that want to, to talk to you about some of these issues that you brought forward. Council have any comments for Thel McCall? Mr. Bullock?
Yes, Thel, I want to thank you for coming forward. It seems that you've been holding a lot of these remarks inside for a while. Because if you brought up NASCAR, that has been a timely, very timely subject that has died in some people's eyes, but has never died completely in the city. But for you to sit back and watch and observe what other councils have done and put us on the spot to say, "Okay, I'm gonna watch to see what you guys do," that's exactly what I want you to do. I want you to keep note of what this council is doing and how we're performing. And if anytime you don't see us performing up- anytime you don't see us performing up to spec, come back in and let us know exactly what we're doing wrong. And as far as north and south, that is one of the issues that I know this council is working very hard to dissolve. This is Commerce City, this isn't north Commerce City or south Commerce City. We have a barrier in between, which is the Rocky Mountain Wildlife Refuge, but that is part of Commerce City, and that doesn't make it north or south, that just makes it part of Commerce City. Thank you.
Mr. Benson, did you have something?
Thanks, Thelma, for coming up. Are you under the impression that the city in some way barred NASCAR from coming into the city?
Well, from all I've gotten from everybody that I have talked to and the news and everything else, the NASCAR did not come, and unless I'm wrong, which I could be, never did have a meeting with city council. And isn't that what you're supposed to—
I don't know—
Visit with them first?
Yeah, I don't know why that didn't happen. I wasn't on the council at that time, but nothing has—NASCAR could come in right now and acquire property, and as long as that use was within the existing zoning, they could build a track anywhere in the city that they wanted to. There's nothing to stop them from doing that. So I don't know, a lot of people think that we barred NASCAR, that just didn't happen. What we did do is we said no city money can be used to help that project, but NASCAR can come in at any time, and as long as they're within the zoning, they can acquire the property, build the structures that they want to, and build a racetrack. And I would— and if they want to do that, that would be fine with me.
Well, according to what NASCAR has said, they were not given a chance, and that they didn't want to do business with somebody like the city and the city council the way they conducted business.
They wanted to do business through press conferences instead of making a presentation to the city. And I know some of the landowners out there in that area, say west of E-470 between 88th and 96th, they were very irritated by that, because it cost them a lot of money the way NASCAR approached this whole thing. It's too bad that they didn't approach it in the right way, because that might have been accomplished four or five years ago. But there's nothing in our ordinances that prevents NASCAR from coming in anytime they want to, as long as they're within the zoning that's allowed by the property that they acquire, and building a racetrack. Never has been anything in our ordinances. It just prevents city money from being used as an incentive to get that done. They can come in anytime they want to. So I—there's a lot of misinformation going around about a lot of things.
Well, there might be, but I'm hoping that something, even with NASCAR maybe, or some other business, that we do a better thing at it than what the past has done. Because the citizens have lost a lot because of the mistakes city council and city has made.
Well, we don't really know whether we lost anything with NASCAR or not.
Well, if you talk to cities that have not, that did not have NASCAR, and then you call and talk to them now, you'll know.
Well, I have personally told their attorneys about, maybe six or seven times over the past four or five years, you know, "You're welcome to come into Commerce City at any time, you're just not gonna get any city money." They know that, their attorneys know that. I—they want to blame somebody, I guess, but the city only said, "We're not gonna give you any incentives to come in."
Mr. Moreno?
Thelma, I just wanted to thank you for coming and sharing your thoughts. You had said to me a couple weeks ago that you were planning to come, and I asked if I should wear my helmet, and that was actually not as bad as I was expecting. But thank you so much for coming and sharing your thoughts.
Mr. Douglas?
Thank you, Thelma, for keeping us on our toes and, you know, going forward, and that's why I asked for us to bring back the study session so we can look at things more in detail and get a better understanding of things that are coming to our city and if it will fit, you know, looking at 10, 15, 20 years down the road, not just for that month or a year or so. I appreciate that. Thanks.
Mr. Macaldonie?
Hi, Ms. Cole, thanks so much for coming in tonight. I just want to touch on a specific piece of your comment regarding things that the city has lost, and using NASCAR as sort of an example of something that we lost, and suggesting in that statement that we haven't seen other things. And I would just say that the NASCAR discussions petered out in 2007, we're sitting here in 2012, and in the time between, the city has seen a number of rather high-profile additions to the city. I won't remember the numbers off the top of my head, but in the last year alone, the city's added hundreds of new positions, seen millions of dollars in capital investment in new building construction and expansions within our community. And these are all because of efforts by this council and past councils and our city staff to be open for business and ensure that we do have an open dialogue. There's a reason that we were a finalist in the possibility of having the Gaylord Hotel land in Commerce City in conjunction with the National Western Stock Show, and that's because of the efforts of this city and city council in putting together a deal that was very, very viable. So for that to have ended with Commerce City and Aurora as the finalists in that effort says a lot about where we are. So I want to just be very careful to say, while NASCAR didn't materialize, and for many of the reasons that Mr. Benson spoke to, please ensure that folks are aware of those things that have gone our way, where we have fought the good fight and come away with the win for the city. Because I think if you look at that list over the last several years, it's actually quite impressive, and I think we have lots of momentum to continue to show wins in that column. So if we're not doing a good enough job to get those stories out, then I think that's feedback that we are—we need to hear and do—find out a better way to show those stories. But that's a concern, that it doesn't sound like those are known based on what I'm hearing.
Well, that's true, and because I'm not speaking just for myself, I'm speaking for a whole lot of people, and they have asked me, and I said, "Well, I'd come up and say something." But if the people don't know, what do you expect them to think of? We have no—you guys haven't let any of us know any of that.
Well, and that's the part that I really want to zero in on before I let you go, because I feel like there are several ways that these things happen. Certainly, our city staff put out formal press releases, which are available for the national press effectively to pick up, and certainly we make those headlines when those larger profile announcements are made. But we do have a known challenge locally. We don't necessarily see Commerce City-specific stories showing up on night news unless they're less than favorable, they're not showing up at the Denver Post, and so I know that that has an impact. And to help counter that, the city, in partnership with the school district and the water district—I should say school districts—put out a paper that shows up in everyone's mailbox, and these very reports, these very updates are present in those updates. So if—what I want to know is, are you guys not seeing the stories in those—in that communication coming out from the city, the city news? Because if not, then I think we need to get some feedback from you and the others that are concerned that you're not hearing these stories, that we can get to our communications department to learn what other ways we might need to approach getting those—that word out. Because I agree, it is forever one of my—it's been the biggest frustration since I got on council, to know firsthand how much good is happening by our city staff and by this council, and yet so many people don't know. And so it's—I'm looking for that magic bullet that says, "Here's how you get the word out further, better, faster," because it's sad, whether it's a dog park that people don't know exists, or a success story by the addition of a new business, those are important things that everyone would be better off knowing. So I would say that as you have ideas about how to get that story out, bring it to us or bring it directly to city staff so that they can take action on that. I don't know if counsel has any other comments on that, but I mean, I think that's my biggest concern. I think there's really good stuff happening, but how do we make sure that you are aware of it? You know what I mean?
Well, we could find somebody to start another paper. But that's a lot of money and a lot of stuff into, but there's a lot that people do not know.
Yeah, and I know—
But just keep up the good work, just keep improving. Everything you guys have done is not bad, that I know. I've lived here many a year, and I've seen a lot of good.
Good deal.
I just want you guys to stay on your toes, and stay on them too.
Well, Thelma, I want to thank you for coming in, first of all. I will, because I was here when the NASCAR thing happened, I'm not gonna take a position for or against, but I will tell you, there was only one vote taken by the council, and that was to not allow them to present a development plan. So that's the vote that took place, and it did pass, and that's why we're here where we're at today, and NASCAR's not here. So we'll move on from that. The city has a lot of very positive opportunities right now, there are a lot of people looking at Commerce City, and I think you're gonna see some good things come out of the next couple of years.
Well, that's good, thank you.
Absolutely, thank you for coming in.
Thank you.
Mr. Benson?
Oh, thank you. Thelma, I just wanted to say thank you for stating that everything that we have done has not been bad. I appreciate that. And, you know, if there are other people that have questions that they feel have been unanswered for a year or two, try to get them to come in and talk to us at Citizen Communication or send us—send me an email. I answer the emails that I get if I have a question about something, because I know there's a lot of—most of the emails that I get asking questions are due to the fact there's—that there's been a lot of rumor and misinformation floating around, and I'm able to dispel a lot of that. If I don't know the answer, I'll send an email to Mr. McBroom, and he'll find the answer for me. But that's the way to get answers to these questions, you know, we have email accounts, ask people to do that, or to come here like you did at Citizen Communication and voice your concerns, and the council's going to address those concerns. So there's no reason for people to be in the dark about where we are. So—but thank you for coming in tonight.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is approval of the minutes. We have three sets of minutes before us this evening. Before voting, Councilwoman Carson must be allowed to abstain from voting on all three sets, and Councilmembers Benson and Macaldonie from the February 13th meeting because of their excused absence. So I am open for a motion to allow those abstentions. Light didn't come up. Oh, there it is. Mr. Teeter, your light didn't come up at all.
Approval of minutes for February 6th, 2012.
I need—first, Rick, can you do a motion to allow abstention from JV on all three, and for Mr. Macaldonie, Mr. Benson for the February 13th?
Sure, I should have thought about that. Okay, I moved it to people that was absent, be abstained, and vote on the minutes.
Thank you. Do you need that more clarified? That's okay? Okay, you can handle that.
The minutes will pick that up.
Okay, great, thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the minutes allowing the abstin—or, I'm sorry, I have a motion to allow the abstention for the three city council members in their respective sets of minutes. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Now, I'll—Mr. Moreno, I'll take a motion on the minutes.
Do they have to be individual, or can we move them all at once?
Move them all together, correct?
No. Move to approve—
The only problem with that is that you got abstentions on that one set, so it's really better to take—
Move to approve meeting minutes of February 6th, 2012.
Okay. I have a motion, this is Mr. Macaldonie.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried. I'll take a motion on the next set. Mr. Moreno?
Move to approve the meeting minutes of February 13th, 2012.
Okay. Mr. Macaldonie? I'm sorry. Mr. Teeter?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried.
And I'm abstaining.
You're abstaining, so is Mr. Macaldonie, that's why he didn't vote. And so is Councilwoman Carson.
I thought we were allowed to abstain.
Yeah, she's got it all covered. Mr. Moreno?
Move to approve the meeting minutes of March 19th, 2012.
Okay. Mr. Teeter?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried, and all the minutes have been taken care of. Next, we have the consent agenda, and there's only one item on the consent agenda this evening. This item was approved unanimously in March 19th meeting. Generally, items on the consent agenda are not discussed, however, since there is no other item on the consent agenda, what is the council's desire? Mr. Bullock?
Move to approve the consent agenda, as—move to approve the consent agenda.
Okay. Excuse me real quick, council members, these lights aren't working properly, they're kind of backing up behind each other, so I can't see who is requesting to speak, so if I don't call on you, it's not intentionally. Mr. Moreno?
Second motion.
Yeah, I have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. Mr. Attorney, read the title, please.
Title of ordinance 1889 reads, "An ordinance consolidating the Housing Code Loan Program Fund, Employee-Assisted Housing Fund, and the PCEPP Fund into the General Fund, and transferring all remaining balances from the Housing Code Loan Program Fund, the Employee-Assisted Housing Fund, and the PCEPP Fund to the General Fund, and thereby eliminating the Housing Code Loan Program Fund, the Employee-Assisted Housing Fund, and the PCEPP Fund."
Okay, thank you. I'll ask for a roll call vote. Let the record show that the consent agenda is approved unanimously. Next item on the agenda, Resolution 2012-17. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak on this item? Seeing none, what are the desires of council? Mr. Macaldonie?
I would move to approve Resolution 2012-17.
Okay, Mr. Bullock?
Second motion.
Okay. Mr. Attorney?
One item that bring to the council's attention in Section 8 of the employment agreement that you have in front of you, there's a sentence that says McBroom may use the said vehicle for business and slash or personal use. That should be amended by including, "Except the city shall only pay for costs of fuel used for personal use of the vehicle in the state of Colorado." I believe that was the council's direction to me.
Is that acceptable to the motion maker?
Yes, it is.
And the second?
Yes.
Is there any other discussion concerning the employment contract resolution by the council? Seeing none, I'll ask for a vote. All those in favor—oh, you do what? You need to read the title? Mr. Attorney?
Yes.
Title reads, "Resolution 2012-17, Resolution approving employment agreement with Brian K. McBroom as city manager."
Thank you. You went through your explanation and threw it off. All right, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried. Congratulations, Mr. McBroom, and I would—I would ask that that contract be available to the public if anybody would like to look at it, to be transparent, I want to make sure that it's available. Okay? Next item, Resolution 2012-18. I'd like to invite Intergovernmental Relations Manager Cordero to come to the podium and address the council on this proposed resolution.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and members of council. We put in Resolution 1218 on the calendar for today. Last Monday, in the Senate, Senate Concurrent Resolution 2 was introduced, which in its surface, it creates a new lottery game, but essentially what it does is that it changes the formula by which lottery proceeds go to pay for—to fund the fund where parks improvements get paid for every year. Commerce City receives approximately $350,000 a year in addition to grants, which we've received regularly between 2002 and 2000—between 2000 and— received regularly, between 2002 and 2000, between 2002 and 2011, we received about $1.35 million, and we have another grant that we've put in that we think we may receive in the next year or so for $1.5 million. We believe that if this, if this Senate Concurrent Resolution were to go through the Senate and through the House, and get on the ballot and pass in November, that it can potent, it could potentially significantly affect the funds that we receive to work on our parks and to, and to maintain our trails. And so, what we're asking council to discuss and hopefully approve, is a resolution that says that our council supports the current formula by which the lottery funds are being distributed, and, and supports the funds that we receive here in Commerce City on a yearly basis, and through grants. And I'll take any questions if you have.
Okay. Mr. Bullock? Okay. Councilwoman Carson?
Mine was also on the one prior.
Mr. McElhany?
Mine is from this. In looking over the, the resolution, Mr. Cordero, the one thing I was trying to find reference to, and I don't know if, if this is valid, but my memory seems to recall that, I mean, one of the founding principles of, of the lottery was that the proceeds of, of that would in effect be used to help with the public improvements that we're, we're speaking to in the resolution. So, it was sort of a foundational concept. That's what brought the Colorado Lottery into, into being. And so, to undermine it at this point, after its long period of success, seems kind of counter. And I know, we obviously speak to pieces of that, but I guess, just sort of hitting it square seems to me to make good sense.
I'm sorry, would you repeat that last part again?
Well, I, I think, I mean, I think we need almost to speak to that right out of the gate. I mean, that's a foundational concept of what brought Lotto into being. And, and we're sort of talking about the, the issues here, but not saying so straightforward, in such a straightforward manner, that, you know, you're essentially changing the very nature of, of lottery, right? I mean, am I misunderstanding the?
I don't think you're misunderstanding it. The, the reason why the, the resolution goes through the motions is because the, the resolution that's, it actually got a, dealt a big blow in the Senate today because of a procedural vote, and we think that it may not go any further, but it could.
Okay.
Because, uh, things happen. The reason why we're, we're going through the motions is because the Senate Concurrent Resolution has to pass both houses. It does not go to the governor, and then it goes to the, to the citizens of Colorado. And so, it would go in our constitution, just as it originally did, and effectively, it would change that premise that you're referring to.
Okay. Thank you for that.
Okay. Mr. Moreno?
I guess I'm a little hesitant to support this resolution, because while I agree with Councilman McElhany that it does change the, the formula structure, well, I'm not sure if it changes the formula structure of the lottery, it changes the intent of the lottery. I do think that authority to change that at any time rests with the voters, and I think that's what the legislature is seeking to do here, is to ask the vote, ask the voters. I do value what we've been able to do with lottery funds in Commerce City. But, just pulling up the bill itself, right here in the text, it says, "The state-supervised lottery games for state veterans' assistance will not affect the dedication of existing lottery proceeds under the Great Colorado Outdoors Program." Now, there's a lot of language.
That makes an assumption.
Yes.
The assumption is that, that more people will play the new game, and not the same people play and effectively change the distribution.
Sure.
Our, our fears are that it will, that the same people, the same average people, number of people will continue to play, and therefore change the distribution.
I guess my, my challenge is, one of the great problems we have in Colorado is this mandated funding that we include in our state constitution, and it's one of the reasons why we are in such dire straits for funding today. That's just my opinion on this.
Okay. Mr. Benson?
Thank you, Mr. Cordero. What type of new lottery game does this create?
That's left to the lottery, I don't know. I don't know, Councilman Benson?
It's just a new type of game, and they think it is going to result in an increase in the number of people buying lottery tickets. Is that about it?
Just a second.
And what would be the proposal? Right now, you say it's 50% to GOCO, 40% to the Conservation Trust Fund, and 10% to the Colorado Division of Parks and Wildlife. What would that breakdown be if this got on the ballot and the citizens approved it?
As I understand it, the, the, all the proceeds of the new game would be directed towards a, a fund that would pay for veterans' programs.
Just the proceeds of that new game?
Yes.
But the rest of the Lotto tickets would be distributed according to the 50, 40, and 10?
Yes.
Well, what is, you know, you've had an opportunity to look at this. What is your, your personal recommendation? I mean, and all this is doing is saying, we're going to put it on the ballot, and I like to see things go on the ballot, let the people vote on them myself, but how do you, how do you personally feel about it? I'm just asking for your personal opinion.
I apologize, Councilman Benson, I think I will refrain from answering that question.
Good answer. Is this a Fifth Amendment-type thing?
Sure.
All right. I don't, I don't think I could support this resolution. I think that it doesn't seem like it's going to hurt our existing, existing way that the funds are distributed. And I like to see things go, the people put the lottery into existence back in, what, '76? And if the people want to change it, then I think they've got a right to do that. All we're talking about is putting it on the ballot. I've got no problem with that. But, anyway, that's just my opinion.
Okay. Mr. Douglas?
Thank you, Ms. I had a question. Did they bring up, the last time they tried to, well, change how the, the distribution of funds by, by having them allocated towards colleges, to small colleges, was that, community colleges? Was that talked about? Because some of those colleges didn't, didn't get the effect of distribution funds.
Councilman Douglas, I think you may be referring to something that was on the ballot last year.
Right.
And failed. This one is not, this one does not allocate funds towards community colleges.
Okay, no, I understand that, but just how that process went, because that didn't work out too good. So, as far as this, this going forward, I mean, I see the same kind of thing playing out. So, I wouldn't be supportive of that as well.
Well, I, I just want to clarify what we're presenting to you. The, only the Senate or the State House have the authority to put forth a Senate Concurrent Resolution or a House Concurrent Resolution. And those types of bills, if approved by both houses, then they bypass the governor, and they get placed on the ballot for the citizens of Colorado to vote.
Good.
What we're asking for is, for this city council to approve a resolution that supports the current formula. In, in essence, what this council would be doing by approving this would be saying, "We like the way things are now." Because this, the way things are now, it guarantees X amount of funds coming to Commerce City. And one thing that I forgot to mention, Mr. Mayor, is that the, the Colorado Municipal League and a number of other associations are passing, and cities also, are passing similar resolutions tonight and this week, to support the current formula.
Um, Ms., how much money did we receive last year from the lottery, Commerce City?
On average, we received yearly approximately $350,000.
$350,000? Okay, thanks.
Okay. Mr. Bullock?
That, that number is a little bit different, because we receive more than $350,000. We receive $350,000 directly from the lottery. But then, Adams County receives money for their open space from the lottery, and different other entities that we receive grants from. So, we receive more than $350,000. What, I'm not going to try to explain it, but if, this is a case of it isn't broke, don't fix it. And what we're trying to do, and I understand that they're looking for different means to fund ideals in this state, but if you see how things play out in Colorado a lot of times, once this moves forward, we're going to start receiving less money. Adams City, I mean, Adams County's going to receive less money, and our, our Parks and Trails grant funds are going to start dwindling. So, I'm in full support of this resolution, and at the meeting we had last Friday, one of the things that was discussed really briefly was the fact that there are a lot of cities and towns around the whole state that are putting forth resolutions, because they know that anytime the formula gets changed, it never gets changed to benefit us. It always gets changed, and then we become a casualty to it. So, I would say, think hard and wise before you say that you wouldn't support this resolution.
Okay. Mr. Moreno?
Regarding this, I, I think, and to Mr., the point I think Mr. Douglas was trying to make, I think the legislature often makes statements that we can divert some of this funding, funding to programs like education, or to higher education, departments that have seen a, a big, a big hit in the state budget. That's not exactly the easiest argument to make, because this is constitutionally mandated funding. It doesn't come out of the general fund. It comes directly from Lotto proceeds, which then go to local counties and, and communities across the state to fund open space and parks projects. This is challenging, because yes, Mr. Benson, I, I think you're correct. All they're asking for is to send it to a vote of the people, but in reality, you know, the, the resolution that we're voting on tonight frankly is in, in Commerce City's best interest, to keep the formula the way it is. My question would be to you, Mr. Cordero, if this resolution should not pass unanimously, does that then lessen the influence of us actually taking a position on it? I mean, should we take a position if it's not unanimous?
That's, that's a great question. You know, generally, when it comes to lobbying, or, or trying to put forth and explain the council's will, in an ideal world, you know, it should be, or it would be, a unanimous vote. I don't normally get asked, well, you know, how, what was the vote like, you know, when such resolution passed? But it, it could get asked. That's the best answer I can come up with.
Thank you. Mr. Gay?
Generally speaking, when council passes a resolution, we send forward a copy of the resolution approved. The resolution, when you read the body of the resolution, does not describe the vote. It just says, "It passed." So, unless someone were going to inquire about how it passed, or, or words to that effect, that issue never becomes a talking point. It's just, whether it passed or not, it's just like any other legislation, does it pass or not pass? And if it passes, that's the bottom line.
Thank you.
I would ask the council, since I'm, since the machine's having troubles here, every time someone, if I try to move them up, it covers up a name or removes a name. So, if, if you push your light to speak, please push it after you're done speaking to take it off, so that I don't have to remove it, because when I do, it removes someone else at the same time. Thank you. Councilwoman Carson?
Thank you, Ms. I, Mr. McElhany, I agree with you. Some of us, I'm not sure old enough on this council to remember when we passed this bill for the lottery. It, it was put to the citizens that this is what it would fund. It will greatly affect our city if we lose this. I'm sorry, I, I fully support veterans. I think they need way more than what any veteran is out there is afforded. This is not the avenue to take. The House and the Senate can come up with something much better for, for our veterans. I, I almost find this, I'll quit on that, but it, it really is disrespectful, I think, to the veterans, to say that we're going to fund you through gambling, if, if we can get gambling dollars out there. I don't like it. That, that really does not speak to my heart, that we're stepping up to the plate for the veterans. It will not be explained to citizens what cities and counties will lose in this. It will play upon their hearts that how do you not support the veterans? So, no, I have no problem with supporting this. I, I think it was very wrong on their part to bring this forward.
Mr. Benson?
Yes, thank you. How is the present formula changed as far as income from the current lottery games? Didn't you, didn't you say that it's still going to be 50, 40, and 10 from the current lottery games? It's not going to change?
The, there's, there's more than one ways to change it. On paper, you can, you can leave the formula the way it is, and if you divide up the pie further, you're, you're essentially changing the formula, or changing ultimately the, the amount of funds that flow into local communities.
You know, this will be thoroughly explained to everybody. I mean, we all get that blue book. The proponents of the measure have an opportunity to put in what they want. I guess it's, it's screened for content and accuracy, and the opponents of a measure have the same opportunity. So, anybody that reads the blue book, and I hope people do that before they vote on these ballot measures, how many ballot measures did we have on two years ago? About 10? I don't believe any of them passed. How many, Mr. Moreno?
There were three referred by the legislature, the rest were citizen issues.
Well, same thing. It's just, did any of them pass? None of them passed. This was passed by the people in '76, for those of you that are too young to have been born by that time. But this ought to be up to the people. Let the people vote on it again. I mean, I, that's just my position.
Mr. McElhany?
I think Ms. Carson did a great job of netting out much of my sentiment on this subject. I think the piece that seems to be missed by some is the point that Mr. Cordero was just trying to make, which is, even if the letter of this says that the formula will remain unchanged, the fundamental issue is that if you put less in the front end, you get less out the back end. Even if the proportions that
That's right.
...flow through that formula are the same, the, the outcome, the result to the, to the communities is less. And so, I, I think Mr. Cordero made the point earlier, I don't know if everyone caught it. The suspicion here is that when you introduce a new game, and that game has a very defined formula, an allocation of how those revenues will be, be spent, versus funds coming in, spent on the traditional games, you either need to have some way to assure that you are truly going to see a gain in play across the board in order to guarantee a preservation of the, the GOCO dollars that we know today. And I think Mr. Cordero was spot on, there's no way to guarantee that. The, the number of people playing lottery can be trended back to its inception. I don't think you're going to see, and there have been a number of games introduced under the umbrella of the current lottery structure. You introduce a new game, the, the end user, customer who's buying into the game, isn't going to know necessarily that they're buying the veteran benefit game, or the GOCO benefit game. The level of play is likely to stay the same. And so, the ultimate outcome is that And so the ultimate outcome is that GOCO sees less dollars. And maybe there's a lift in dollars now for veterans program. So, you know, again, I think it's a personal decision based on those facts. It's fairly plain in my mind. But thank you very much for bringing this forward, Mr. Cordero.
I've been sitting up here listening to all of the discussion. And I have actually went both ways on it and, and considered not supporting it and considering supporting it. My concern is, is this. I believe Mr. Moreno and Mr. Benson are correct when they say let it go to the people. I believe that the information you're bringing to us is not for you to decide, but for you to ask us, and I appreciate that. I also appreciate the rest of the council to try to protect the GOCO dollars. And I guess where I'm at is I'm going to support this ordinance, or this resolution, I'm sorry, this resolution, that, the way you have it. However, I also would support a new game and their funds from that new game going to our veterans. And I wish that's how they would have structured it instead of tying the two together and to just, just do a new program and, and figure out how they're going to disperse those funds to whatever category they feel. And, and I, I think the veterans is a good category for that money to go to. So I would like to state that I hope our representatives and our senators could sit down and put something on the ballot that would generate a new game and those dollars go to that specific intention and to leave this portion separate instead of tying the two together. So I will be supporting the resolution after contemplating it heavy up here this, this afternoon. Seeing no other discussion, what are the desires of the council? Did you hit your light, Mr. Bullock? It's not on over here.
We didn't do this all right.
No, we did not, we did not make a motion. Mr. Bullock?
Make a motion to approve Resolution 2012-18.
Thank you. Mr. Teeter?
I'm going to second that.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none. Mr. Attorney?
Title Resolution 2012-18 reads, "Resolution to Protect the Current Lottery Distribution Formula."
Thank you. I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried. Directly reflect one nay vote. Mr. Benson. No, it was two. Oh, I didn't hear yours. And Mr. Douglas. Next item on the agenda, as ordinance is on second reading, we have Ordinance 1888. This ordinance was not included on tonight's consent agenda because there was a nay vote when it was introduced on March 19th. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak on this item? Seeing no one. What is the council's desires? Mr. Benson.
You know, I guess this is about the third time that I've been over this, but I've made some inquiries and this $2 million is money that will not be available to the GID to perform for the purposes for which the GID was created. If the GID runs short of money, it's going to have to issue more bonds or increase the mill levy, both of which would require a vote of the people. You might say it's only $2 million. Well, that's enough to do a lot of things. And now we're spending it on something that benefits the whole city. I mean, we're talking about having one city here. Passage of this is one way that I know. I've gotten emails about this. This is one way to further split the North and the South because it makes it look like that the, the South part of the city is asking the North part to pay its way, to pay the way of the South. And I have responded to those emails by saying, I don't, I don't think this should happen. But again, I'm only one vote on the council. But why? It's just wrong-headed for the GID to pay for something that's going to benefit a business that's not even in the GID where it's going to take $2 million out of the money that the GID has to let it work on the, for the purposes for which the GID was created. It's money that's, that's gone unless the city wants to pay it back. And I, I've suggested that we do it in the form of a loan, various other things. That did not meet with any approval, but it's just a wrong-headed thing to get started. How much more money is this city going to need from the Northern Infrastructure GID before we're, we don't have any money left to do what we're supposed to be doing with the money from the GID? How much more is the city going to want? Do you have any idea about that, Mr. McBroom? How much more than?
My apologies. I was asking Mr. Gayle a question. Can you restate your question?
No, that's okay. That's all I have.
Okay. Mr. Bullock?
Move to approve Ordinance 1888 on second reading.
I have a request.
Motion's already been made, I thought.
Okay. Do you want to wait to discussion?
No. We can go ahead and take the motion. I'll ask for a second and then I'll continue with comments. Mr. McElDowney?
I had comments, but I'm prepared to second that motion. May I do both?
Okay.
I will second, second the motion.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Now, Mr. McElDowney, what are your comments?
You know, I, it's, it's, this is a topic that's really easy to misconstrue. And it, it's easy to say that this is a project that the GID is funding to benefit the South, but until the, the definition of the South equates to properties immediately south of 104th Avenue, I'm not sure how that's an accurate definition of, of that. So I think we have to first agree that that's not the case. Second, I think it's important to put in context for folks that are not familiar, the current construction and the construction complete thus far on the 104th Avenue corridor has been funded exclusively out of the GID. So this, as we talked about when this was brought forward to, to us a couple of weeks ago, this is a component, in my mind, of the 104th Avenue expansion where it meets I-76. The, the challenge is you cannot complete that section without terminating Havana at the point that it reaches 104th. So you either pay to fix it or you don't. Now, the, the fact that it will provide access into the business district that sits just south of 104th certainly is a benefit to them. It's a benefit to the citizens of your ward and my part of the community that need to drive down 104th to reach the dog park and the future community park site. I mean, this is a piece of infrastructure that is not being built for the sole benefit of somebody in an area outside of the GID. It's being built for the community to improve and optimize the design of the 104th Avenue corridor. I think the other piece that I wanted to touch on that staff made quite clear to us last week that folks may not have chosen to recall is that while this money is coming out of the GID, or that is the proposal, there is a similar amount, if not more, that has been discussed that would go toward next steps on the Tower Road corridor, I believe was, was the, the discussion. And that would be coming out of a general fund, yet has an almost exclusive benefit to the northern range. So this is a matter of accounting. There will be expenditures made on the 104th Avenue corridor at Joliet. There will be expenditures made on Tower Road, both of which are good for the city, good for economic development. They're just good. So if we want to make it into something bad, then take it down that road, but it's an invalid position.
Councilwoman Carson.
All right. I was, Mr. Benson and I, I was slightly confused. Now I'm extremely confused. The GID, I, I thought I fully understood. Why should existing residents have to pay for new? I don't understand when it really comes into businesses. I fully understand the whole residential piece of a GID, the parks, the rec, the homes, whatever would be that would serve those rooftops. Businesses is, I, I am getting confused. So if somebody can explain why we fund major thoroughfares through that GID for businesses, Mr. Mayor?
I'll do my best. And please, Mr. Attorney or Mr. McBroom, please stop me or Mr. Hayes if I am offline. The GID was created to be able to borrow money, to put in infrastructure in our northern range so that we could have the opportunity to develop. With that being said, those property owners bought into that, that scenario and threw a tax on that GID to pay back the cost of those improvements for development to occur. Now, I would have to say, if we did not develop north of 96th and that GID was not created, would there be a need at this time to develop Joliet Street? Probably not. But I would have to also lean towards Mr. McElDowney's scenario and we could say, you know what? Let's take the $2 million out of the general fund that is intended for Tower Road and put it into the Joliet Street project and use the GID funds on Tower Road if people want to think that this has to do with location and where those funds can be spent. After the GID, the GID was originally set up to include for water and sewer installation. It's a partnership between the district and the city. That was expanded by a vote, by a vote of the people to include the transportation piece of 104th. At that time, they expanded it and were widening 104th because of that vote. So the people that live in the GID, just like myself and you do, Councilwoman Carson, are paying that tax and, and that, that tax was extended out for a period of time further than what, what would have taken place for the water and sewer portion. By a vote of the people to improve 104th. Without the improvement of 104th, would Joliet Street need to be improved? That, that's what really is contemplated here. This is, this is the kind of discussion and, and the comments that I've heard are, are what separate our city. We're one city. I was, I was born and raised in the south part of Commerce City. I now live in the north part of Commerce City. But to me, it's all Commerce City. I know at the time when the growth initiative was passed, the residents at that time put in that growth initiative that they want a development to pay for its own way. We doubled the size of our city by expanding to the north, therefore causing a need to expand our transportation systems. And I do believe that we are spending the $2 million out of the general fund on Tower Road. And if it would make anybody feel better, we can, we can swap that and use the GID funds on, on the Tower Road piece and use the general fund dollars on Joliet Street. But what further complicates things is when people take the context outside of this, outside of what it is and try to turn it into something else. It pits the North against the South. And I don't want that to happen. We need those improvements and those, those improvement dollars were approved by the voters for the transportation systems in the north. Now, as far as I, I can remember, that boundary line when, when the growth initiative was passed was to develop north of 96th Avenue. That is within this district. The property owners that, that may, that are, may have bought Joliet Street, may not have included into the GID when the GID was developed, nor can we force them to join the GID after the fact. But as development occurs, people have to join and, and there's a process. So it's the original landowners that participated with it, not the current property owners. So those original, original owners of land at the time signed on to the GID and the development that occurs on those lands are the ones that have to participate in paying that tax back, like in River Run. So that's, from my understanding, that's how it works. I think we need the transportation piece. I think it benefits the whole city. I think it benefits our area more than it does the area where City Hall is now. However, we're building one community and we can use those general fund dollars if it would please members of this council so that we don't try to further drive a wedge between the two portions of our city. And that's, that's probably the best I can do. Is there anything, Mr. Attorney, that I misspoke on?
I think I covered it all.
Thank you. Hopefully that answers your question. Mr. Benson?
The thing that would be driving a wedge would be the passage of this showing that money that's paid only by the people in the north area is being used to pay for things that benefit the whole city. And you said this benefits the whole city. Cummins benefits the whole city. Quebec Street and the Civic Center benefit the whole city. The whole city is paying for that. Tower Road, the development along Tower Road is going to benefit the whole city, not the Northern Infrastructure GID and not just the people who live up there. We hope to have businesses, restaurants, hotels, light industry, all along, all along Tower Road. It benefits the whole city. The whole city should be paying for that. If the whole city is going to be benefited by something, then the whole city should be paying for it and we shouldn't have $2 million deducted out of our little GID here to pay for that, which is going to be gone forever unless the city decides to pay it back. As I said, we need that money at some time in the future. We'd have, we'd have to go to the people and ask for more bonds to be issued or for, for a mill levy increase. I don't want to have to, the people aren't going to pass any kind of a tax increase or a bond issue these days. We have that $2 million that's there for 104th and for that, the development of 104th. And we've done a great job doing that. Once we extend it out to Highway 85, it's going to be a great accomplishment, I think. But you want to split the city between north and south, get the north to pay, start paying for things that benefit the whole city. That's what's going to split this city in half.
I appreciate your comments, Mr. Benson. My, I was just trying to answer Councilwoman Carson's questions and to explain how the GID was formed and what the passage of, of the second part of the GID was there for. And it's up to, up to the individual council members to determine if that money should be spent on this project or not. And my, my comments to Mrs. Ca, Councilwoman Carson were only to answer or address her question on the development of the GID.
No, I understand that. And my comments weren't directed just against you.
All right. I just didn't want you to think that I'm sitting here
They were brought up.
disagreeing with you. I'm, I'm respecting your position and we'll move forward and see what the rest of the council, how they feel about it. Mr. McElDowney?
I'm going to hold my further comments for the moment. But I, well, actually, no, I take that back. I had, we've got the map on screen, but is it possible to actually pull up a Google map to show the area? I think that might be better contextually because it shows the, the property across the street. Again, there, there's a repeated statement coming from the other end of the dais regarding north and south. And given the comments that we heard from a citizen just at the top of the meeting, I think we need to be very conscious of the fact that this is not a north-south issue. We talk about developing major infrastructure through our city, whether it's Tower, whether it's Quebec, whether it's 104th, whether it's Highway 85 and 104th. Those are not only city benefits, citywide benefit, of citywide benefit, but of regional benefit. They change how business and people move through our community. It allows people to do business here or increase the level of business that they may not have done before. I, I would like Mr. Benson to explain how he defines the intersection of 104th and Havana as being outside of the north. And if the voters approved using GID funds to build 104th and we are proposing that this be completed to help solve for the completion of that project, how is that an inappropriate use of these dollars? As we heard from city, the Public Works Director last week, or when we heard about this in a prior meeting, they cannot complete 104th over I-76 and leave the current Havana connection open. You have to close Havana at 104th. You have to move the movement further to the east at Joliet to allow traffic to come off of 104th onto Joliet and ultimately connect with Havana. The fact that that is going to go around a, a new business and the fact that it's going to connect into an existing business park are gravy in my mind. But ultimately, we can't solve for 104th as we've promised the voters if we don't do this. So I, I don't know how to make it any simpler. If we want to make it a high drama issue, you can make it a high drama issue, but that's an invention. It's not. It's not, there's no basis for that.
Mr. Douglas?
On that map, we had the, you have the map there. It showed the spur off there on top. Now, it shows a left-turn lane. Now, right now, there's nothing going across there, right? Connecting, it's just a...
This way?
Yeah, when you go north, across Joliet, yeah. When you go up there, is that slated for, is that towards the, that trailer park? I mean, not Trailer Park, but Trailer rental?
Manufacturing.
Oh, no, that street right there, okay. That's where the trailer area is, right? So that intersection there. Now, as far as the building, you know, timing thing too, because One Hundred and Fourth is supposed to be widened as we come west from Highway Two, correct? All the way to the bridge?
Mayor and council, that phase of the One Hundred and Fourth Avenue project was scheduled to begin later this year. The right-of-way has been acquired. Plans are almost in place. However, we have the issue with the PUC approval of the railroad crossing issue that has not been resolved. So beginning that process is not set at this point.
Okay. So there's no way we could make Joliet now a ride-in, ride-out, and then it should come down to Havana? And that's where we could turn left to come down? As of now, until, you know, and I understand about the northern infrastructure, and this isn't a north, but use those funds for that? That's my challenge there.
Let me clarify one point made. The point, the issue at One Hundred and Fourth in Havana, as exists now, if we were to proceed with the Phase B construction, as I indicated earlier, without this connection, Havana would remain in place. This, however, gives us the opportunity to complete that connection, which is in the comprehensive transportation plan for a Collector Street connection. And it provides also the impetus and the funding to get that connection made. That, so that, right now, that Johnupland Street's only serving as an access to Cummins. This would provide the public access for the all neighborhoods.
And was there a traffic study as well? I mean, I think we, I'm not sure if we touched on it or not last time, if there was a traffic study, amount of traffic coming in and out of there to warrant this expansion right now?
There was a traffic study. I don't have the details on that. But they had to provide that access for their operation to begin with. The extension of Havana with the other, with the plans, can you put that, well, I don't want to upset that. There is access from Havana, you can see right at that location there, for their new construction, their use.
So there was a traffic count on Havana as of now? I mean, and then also...
We have county information, yes.
Okay. All right, thanks.
Mr. Marado?
A couple of items on this. I don't think this is a wedge issue at all. I think, I really disagree with how this project has been characterized. What we see is, we can make these arguments until we're blue in the face. Everyone benefits from everything that's happened, the work that's gone in One Hundred and Fourth. Everyone benefits from the industrial and manufacturing base of the core city. Like Ms. Cole said, we need to stop this constant division between the north and the south. This project is going to have great prospect for the northern range. It's bringing 150 jobs to that community. One of the biggest problems that we've had in the northern range in attracting retail and development is a daytime workforce population. This will help us build towards that number and finally attract those retail establishments. I just disagree that we continue to characterize projects in our community as a north project or a south project. They're a project in Commerce City.
Okay. Mr. Benson?
Call the question.
Okay. I have a motion and a second. Mr. Attorney, want to read the title, please?
Title of ordinance 1888 reads, "An Ordinance Amending the 2012 Budget of the City of Commerce City, Colorado by the recognition of funds from the Commerce City Northern Infrastructure General Improvement District in the amount of $2 million for the capital project identified as Joliet Street and the authorization of the expenditure thereof."
Okay, thank you. I'll ask for a roll call vote. Let the record show that the motion is approved, seven to two. Next item on the agenda, ordinance 1890. Was not included in tonight's consent agenda. There was one nay vote when it was introduced on March 19th. Mr. McBroom would like to address the council on this item.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. When this item was last discussed by council, there was some discussion about whether to audio or videotape the study session meetings. I had indicated at that time that we would bring some information forward to you tonight, giving you some options. I have another suggestion. My suggestion would be to move to the study session format, perhaps conduct a month or two months' worth of study session meetings, which would be two or four meetings. And then let's discuss how the format is working and whether it's meeting your expectations in terms of the basic concept of holding study sessions. If it is, and the council would like to continue holding study sessions in a conference room in a more informal nature, then we can bring to you better proposals on how to best videotape or audiotape those meetings. The reason we didn't want to bring that information forward just yet and initiate that expense is it seemed to make sense to try it out, see if the city council likes the format, and then we can discuss options for audio and video and the relative costs.
Thank you. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak on this ordinance? Seeing no one, what are the desires of council? Mr. Bullock?
I move to approve 1890. I will have some discussion afterwards.
Okay. Councilwoman Carson?
Second.
We have a motion and a second discussion. Mr. Bullock?
Yes, I wholeheartedly want to go to a study session format. I've been asked by a lot of citizens that when we're in a study session, if they don't know what we've talked about in length, basically, they've been left out of it if they're watching this on TV. So when we bring it back from the study session, I would like, before we decide how we like it or not and go forward from there on the two or three meetings that Mr. McBroom suggested, that we give a detailed synopsis so the citizens watching this on TV will know what we discussed in study session because it isn't being filmed at that time. Because they see us now and they hear all the detailed discussion. In a study session format, if it isn't recorded, all we will do is come back, make a motion and vote because basically we've discussed the whole issue already. So I would just like that we give a detailed synopsis of what we talked about so the citizens will know how we arrived at the vote we are voting on.
Mr. McBroom, I fully agree with you. I would like to extend that, though, to six months. I would hate to see us immediately trying to figure out what it was we wanted to provide prior to going in there when, after six months, I think this council will have a pretty good feel of what it is that we need to do to move forward. I do want citizens out there to fully understand, no business is ever done in a study session. It is just a study session. Would we still be doing any types of presentations for items being voted on in council?
Yes.
So that could go a long ways, then, if citizens are wanting more information. And I encourage citizens, please come to study session. You are more than welcome there. So, but no, I'm in full support of this. As a new council member who came on when study sessions had ended, I've never been able to partake into that. I would, it's been something for the two years I've been here that I definitely felt should come back. So I really would like to give this the six months to have an evaluation, to know what it was that we needed. Six months is enough time, then, I think, for citizens to really, for them to understand whether they really do need this, whatever it is that we need to do to move forward on this, so.
Mr. Benson?
Thank you. I remember a few years ago, probably sometime in '07, although Mr. Macaldoney might correct that, that we voted to go with the present format because there were so many issues coming before the city. We didn't want to have a week go by where we were not allowed to vote on issues. And it seems to me like we've got even more on our plate now than we did then. What has changed, but in the last five years, to cause people to want to go back to the old format? When I know why we changed to begin with, well, what are the reasons now for changing back to the old format, which I've had phone calls from people also saying that this takes us out of the ability to be able to watch these things live? I know you can say, well, anybody's welcome to come to these study sessions anytime that they want to, and of course, they are. But they're going to be in a room where we're not able to do live TV, as I understand. Is that correct, Mr. McBroom?
Some of the options we've been researching would include live video of study sessions. That just happens to be the most expensive option, but it is possible.
Because if that could happen, I would be for this. It's not a matter of, okay, let's separate the two things, but I want people to be able to watch this on television. And why are we going from this room into another room? This room, we have the TV already set up. I just don't, I understood the reasons why we changed in the first place. I really have heard no reason why we need to go back, except maybe there are some other cities that do it in a different way. And that, to me, is not enough of a reason. But why are we going back to the old way?
Mr. Douglas?
Well, I'll tell you, Jim, just by watching things over the years and being out there in the community, and there's a lot of things that have come before city council that we've rushed to judgment on, and the result has not been very good. So, and I say everything, there's been some things that you really have to, you know, when things come before us, we have to make sure they're a good fit for our city. And this is a time to ask questions and dive more into it instead of us just coming forward and then making a hasty decision. I'm not comfortable with that. I mean, we're here to do a job, and that's to safeguard the taxpayers' money and also grow this city in a way where, you know, what we put here is going to be here after we're gone. So, and there are some things that we have to look at and weigh things out. You can't weigh things out in a few minutes, a half hour, two hours. That's what makes these council meetings so long. We went to a governing class on Friday at CML, and I believe it's Broomfield. Because of their study session, their city council meetings are 17 minutes. That's it. Because they're well informed at those study sessions. And they're not televised because there's no vote. So as far as the citizens who are watching, and, you know, part of being on TV is being transparent, and so they can actually see and hear what's going on. They don't have to be here. They can also bring it up at their leisure, maybe not tonight, maybe tomorrow or Wednesday, but it's there for them to view and go over and listen. So even the listening part is important. Maybe the audio could be recorded, but as far as video, there's no sense of videotaping. But, I mean, that's just my opinion. I think, like JD said, I think we need more time on this to see if that's going to work and then have citizens come forward to say, hey, you know, this is not working for me. And if we have to. What is the cost in here right now when we do these Monday meetings? What is the cost and how many employees are involved in this whole process?
I don't have that information handy, but we could provide it to you later in the week.
Okay.
Mr. Macaldoney?
Thanks. I'm going to come at this from, I think, a position right between Mr. Benson and the other comments that have been made tonight. I love nothing more than to sit and talk at length about and study issues, but there is this constant sort of, there's this mythology that has developed that says we don't study things. We don't talk about things. We have a very specific piece of an agenda. Right now, it's almost every week that says, "Study." And that piece of the agenda is to do exactly what Mr. Douglas suggested we're not doing. It's up to us to provide feedback to staff about the nature of those study discussions, to give guidance on the kinds of information, the depth of information, the detail of information that we need in order to make sound decisions. If we don't have enough, then it's up to us to tell staff to come back with more. So that, to me, is our job, and if we're not doing that job, then shame on us. But I think we do more often than not. That said, this new format gives us the ability to do that exclusively a couple nights a month, instead of doing it in a part of a meeting every week. It, to Mr. Benson's point, does remove the flexibility that was one of the key reasons why we made that format change. There were, if you want to consider them business case reasons for doing that. Every time we had a study session planned and some other topic emerged that required a regular meeting, well, it instead required a special meeting. And in order to conduct a special meeting, it meant that staff, instead of doing what they would normally be doing in their day, now had to drop everything to ensure that all of the boxes were checked on the steps that had to happen to call that special meeting, to post it, to prepare for it, to notify us, to drop off packets, all of those things. And what we found is that it was happening frequently enough that it was taking people away from what they really needed to be doing day in, day out. So rather than almost all the time go through those motions, why not just schedule a meeting that allows us to do both? And so, again, I am, I have remained fairly silent on this through the process because I'm frankly of the opinion that sometimes you just have to let things go the way they're going to go, and people can figure it out for themselves. I hope that I am surprised by the outcomes of this and that we come away and Mr. Douglas gets all the information he needs and sees a different, you know, and I'm just using you as a figure of the discussion, that we all come away smarter from these discussions and that we feel more comfortable having the in-depth discussions that we need. The fact that we can't do that up here is frustrating, but it may be the case. And so I'm hopeful that by changing this format, that we do have better, more thorough discussions and that we're more comfortable. And I think the evidence of the change, the benefit, the evidence of benefit for this change will be in the kinds of decisions that we make, the quality of those decisions, the detail of... the detail of consideration. I think we give a lot more to this than we give ourselves credit for. You know, at the end of the day, we're going to do what we're supposed to be doing in here in a different room, we're going to limit the exposure to those discussions, that in and of itself, given our own track record, creates its own problems, or potential for problems, because then you have people who believe we're conducting business in a, in a context that doesn't give them visibility to that. Now, I know that we're not inventing the study session format, it exists all over the place, many people use this regularly, it's the way they've always done it. So, you know, for those reasons, you know, I'm open to it. I think to Ms. Carson's point, we do have to be careful about how quickly we make the decision to expend dollars to record these things in a, in a full, fully robust way. You know, I would love to say that these are going to be perfectly televised and recorded. I think we need to ensure that we have good minutes, very good minutes, good recaps that are given at the top of meetings that those subject matter are going to be discussed in, and then make the decision down the road, whatever that timeframe is, we decide on whether or not we continue with that format, or, and invest further to help with transparency, or we move back to this format. So, that's my two cents. Thanks.
Mr. Benson.
It's been my observation that in the present way that we do things, we do have a thorough discussion, if it's a study session item. I don't know, Mr. Douglas, are you of the opinion that we rush through these study session items, and then right after that, we take a vote on them? I mean, that's not how it happens. We'll have a study session item on the agenda, and then a couple of weeks later, we might have the ordinance on first reading, which is the way it would be if we went to just strictly study sessions, and then two, three, four weeks later, we'd have an ordinance on first reading, but that's the way we've been doing it. We have a study session, we thoroughly discuss it, I don't recall us being cut short in any of these discussions. We've had a lot of long discussions on study session items. So, going with the existing format is not going to prevent that from happening, any more than going to a pure study session format. I just don't, I still don't see a reason for changing back to the old way, because we had a valid reason for going with the way we do it now, and that, I don't understand how Broomfield can get to a city council meeting in 17 minutes. They must not have much going on in that city. I don't, I don't know, but they certainly don't have as much going on as we do, if they're going to get rid of it in 17 minutes. I wonder how long their study sessions are? I mean, did they say how long their study sessions were?
Mr. Benson, please refrain from asking him a direct question, just, just state it, and then he can answer when it's his turn to have the floor. I don't want there to, I don't want you to encourage a discussion back and forth.
Those are my questions, I just don't understand why we're changing back when, I don't see how the existing system is not working, and the existing system gives our citizens the ability to turn on Channel 8 and watch everything that's going on live, instead of having to get a summary of it later on, or maybe watching a videotape of it later on. We have the facilities right here in this room, and what would be wrong with having, I would be, I would go along with it, we said we're going to have a separate study session, but we're going to do it right here where it can be televised, I'd go along with that. But to move it into a little room, where we're kind of, what if 50 citizens show up for a study session? We don't have room enough for them to sit down. What are we going to do then? Just say, well, you can't, sorry, you can't watch this, you're, you're a citizen, you're going to be excluded from this meeting. I don't want to have to tell anybody that they can't come to a meeting and fully observe the whole thing. I, I just, I see no reason for going back to the old way of doing things, which was found to be faulty, and nobody has said anything so far to convince me that we need to go back to that old faulty method of doing things. And if I've asked some questions, and anybody thinks they can answer them, then please hit your button, and Mr. Ford will call on you.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. Mr. Bullock.
I can answer your questions, Jim. It wasn't Broomfield, it was Westminster, and the question was, what is the shortest council meeting you had? And it was 17 minutes after a study session. So, that's where this all came from. But their study session and work group meetings are very extensive, and I guess you not being a member of the old school and never being in the actual study session room and doing it as it was done in the past, it was a more relaxed atmosphere where more comprehensive conversation took place between the council, face to face, instead of looking up and down the dais, where if I'm looking at you, I have my back to the rest of the council down here. You'll be sitting at a table across from all your council members, where at any given time, you're looking at all of them. So, I mean, it's, it's not a fact that we are reinventing the will, or we found a broken will. What it is, is that a lot of the council members here, myself included, don't feel that we get, and it's sometimes, it's hard for new council members to really immerse themselves in this atmosphere, in this formal setting. And I know a lot of people say, well, let them work it out and get with it. Well, there's a lot of council people that have things to say that in the informal setting of a study session, in a small room, you, you do get more done. And if you break off into, if things are given to work groups, it even accomplishes, it's better. So, I know that you're of the mind that, why change? I'm of the mind of why not?
I know that Mr. Douglas's light was on, there it is, Mr. Douglas.
Yes, sorry, Renee was right, it was Westminster, look at my notes, sorry about that. And the question was phrased like that as well. But that is out of, out of a lot of their, their study sessions, when they have their meetings, they are, they are short, because a lot of work is being done in a study session. I liked the format we had in the retreat, we got a lot of things done, sitting, sitting in that same style right there, and we were able to ask a lot of questions. Like I said, I went to the Effective Governance Class on, workshop on Friday, and I do like the style of having the retreat, because, I mean, sorry, study session, and as far as what Jason has said, it's, I mean, I do look at my packet, I study it well, but the way the sunshine law is, you can't, you can't have a conversation with more than one person. And to have it in a study format, we get to, I get to, I get to hear from each one of the council members on this in more detail, that we don't have other things being interfered with that, because we're just up for, it's just all discussion, we're not voting on anything. And the information, to me, is very important, because in between that study session, come back to your regular meeting, there's more you can take into that, that process, than the way it is right now. And right now, I feel pressure to either, either vote yes or no, and, and the folks that are coming up, their mindset is, hey, this is going to pass the way things are set up, and I don't like that process. So, study session, to me, we all get more information, and whether you don't like that format or not, or you think what you had before worked, well, I liked before when you used to have study sessions. I wasn't on city council, but I saw the process, and it worked. Thank you.
Mr. Benson.
You're not okay.
Well, one question, gosh.
One question you might have.
Not answered. What do we do when more people show up and can be accommodated in the room? How will we go about picking those people who can stay in and listen and watch? And those people that are going to have to leave and not be able to observe, how are we going to do that?
I'll answer that one, it's my turn, Mr. Benson.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
We as staff have considered what would happen in those situations. It seems the best, seems to us the best option would be to simply move the study session back to this room.
Well, that's obviously what should happen. But if we, I will call the question.
There's still some discussion, and I will take the discussion. Mr., Mr. Moreno.
Just briefly, I guess you never really know how, I guess I'll say disorganized or inefficient our system is, until you go and observe another council in another city. Brighton comes to mind, Thornton comes to mind, all of them operate off of these study session, regular session, meeting format. As, as stated multiple times here, no formal action occurs in study sessions, they're always voted on in an open, public meeting. That being said, I actually share Mr. Benson's concern, it's something that I've struggled with regarding the transparency issue, and just that regular meetings like this in this format provide such an easy and accessible way for our citizens to see what's going on. I think that, that's an issue that can eventually be worked out, though, in moving to a study session format.
Councilwoman Carson.
I will start with, did I turn, yeah, I'm on, all right. Council meetings last too long in Commerce City. Citizens can be required to watch up to what, 16 hours and up per month, to catch everything that's going on? Because we come in here, four hours, six hours, I think one night, and then an eight-hour session, Mr. Gaylor, you correct me if I'm wrong. So, to be a citizen in this city, it requires an awful lot of viewing to know what is going on, if you are interested in what business is taking place in Commerce City. At this dais is where business is to take place. Mr. Benson, you have heard from, I think, probably every council person that has been elected since the change came. Every council person has said, this is not a good way to come into council. When you're in study session, first of all, all the time that you're in there is donated to study session. Not, not that I don't want to hear from our citizens, but there is no formal of citizen introduction, no communication, none of this. It is straight into study session, so you must gain time there. I, you know, you could gain 15 minutes, up to an hour, hour and a half, I would assume, into this study session. Counselors, it's a much more inviting, relaxed atmosphere as a counselor, when you're sitting down, not all dressed up with a microphone and cameras on you to be speaking to each other. It's a more inviting environment to ask questions, especially for new counselors. Tonight, I had to ask a question, I'm not new, the GID. This format hinders people from asking certain questions, I think. I, I believe that to be true. The city, I believe, benefits greatly. When you, when you watch your, your city council meeting and you see the business, the business that is happening in the city, if you want to partake in the other, maybe we can find a way that they will be videoed, or this or that, but it's not, I do believe government should be transparent, but I also know we're not going to be doing any business in there. It's not a, a meeting that's behind closed doors, it is a meeting that's welcome to the audience. I would love 50 people to come, every, every, every council meeting that we have, I don't believe it will happen. And Mr. Benson, when we were talking about lottery dollars, you said, let's go to the vote, put the vote out there. Well, I think you have heard from the majority of council that we would like to go back to that.
That's why I called the question.
Well, no, because you had your two or three times it's a microphone, and then you don't want to give anybody else their ones.
Okay, I'll hold up right there, because I don't want the talking back and forth, I want to make sure that the person that has the floor, has the floor. And with that said, you can call for the question, but if there are council, council members that have not had an opportunity to give discussion, when there are other council members that have had an opportunity two or three times, I'm going to make sure that those council members that haven't been heard have an opportunity to be heard, and that includes myself. Mr. Douglas, your light was on, did you have anything else?
Sorry, I can bring it up later, it's something we can work on later.
That's fine.
Thank you.
And I want to give everybody my opinion. I had the opportunity to serve eight years in the, and, and we had study sessions. There was no intention of, of not being transparent. A lot of, a lot of good got done in, in the study sessions. With that being said, we have several new members on this council, that I don't want them to be uncomfortable participating in a conversation and asking questions that they otherwise wouldn't ask, if they're in this formal setting. So, I want to make sure that everybody feels comfortable about being able to hold a discussion about an item that's coming forward, that we need to determine how it's going to benefit our community. And some of these new members, like Rick, or Crystal, or Steve, may feel more comfortable in that kind of a setting, and I know I did as a new council member, to be able to have that kind of a discussion. I don't have a problem with it being taped, I don't have a problem with it being in, in this room. I, I just think that we need to have the opportunity to have a study session outside of a formal council meeting, so that we can have an informal type of discussion. And if it needs to be taped to show that we're transparent, I'm fine with that, because the intent of this, I don't believe was ever to not be transparent to our residents. And if it needs to be done in this room, on tape, so be it. However, I know that myself and Mr. Bullock had the opportunity to participate lengthy in, in study sessions, and I don't believe that there's anybody else on this dais that has had the opportunity. And I would hope that you would allow the opportunity to try a study session, even if it's in this room on tape, in an informal setting, before you judge whether they're effective or not. I know that most cities have the informal study session as a, as a part of their, their operations. Not that we have to be like most, we can do whatever we like, but I do think it's an advantage, especially to our newer members, and to those members that, that want to ask questions, that they don't want to be asking in a formal setting, where they feel uncomfortable about making a mistake. And, and so, with that said, I do have a motion and a second. There is no caveat in there for a timeframe or anything else, so before we vote, I want to make sure that the motion maker and the second are comfortable with their motion, and if they want, if they want to amend that motion, now's the time to do it before I call for the vote.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
In that regard, my suggestion is, is that you vote on the ordinance, which simply provides for regular meetings and study sessions, first and third for regular meetings, second and fourth Mondays for study sessions, to be held in this building, unless otherwise determined by city council, if you decide to move a meeting somewhere else on an isolated instance. And then, if that ordinance passes, then by motion, you direct staff as to how long you want this trial method to take place, as has been suggested, whether it be three months, six months, whatever, but really, that's a separate item if this, if this passes. If it doesn't pass, then it all becomes a moot question. So, if the ordinance passes, then have a motion to how long you want this on a trial basis.
Thank you. How about the motion maker, you're okay with that?
Yes, sir.
And the second? Yes? Okay. One other thing, Mr. Benson asked a question. What residents would we choose to allow into the study session, and which ones would we not allow into the study session? And I would have to tell you, we would always make as, as much effort as we can to make sure all of them could participate in any manner, even if it meant, which we have done in the past, moving the meetings to the gymnasium at the rec center. So, I would never intentionally disclude anybody in this community from participating in any meeting that the city council is having. With that said, all those in favor, oh, you need to read the title, Mr. Attorney?
Title.
And then we'll do a roll call.
Right. Title of ordinance 1890, an ordinance amending section 2-2001 of the Commerce City Revised Municipal Code regarding regular meetings and study sessions of the city council.
Thank you. No, I'll ask- Now, ask for a roll call vote. Let the record show that it is approved. Eight in favor, one opposed. Next item on the agenda, ordinance 1880. Staff want to address the council on this issue. Mr. Kramer?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. We are here tonight to discuss the second reading of the oil and gas moratorium that has been continued multiple times in the past. It has been about seven weeks since this was last discussed at city council. To assist in the process of making a determination about what a decision council would like to do with the second reading, staff does have a bit of an overview about the work that's gone on to date, to provide council with some context about maybe where we should be going as far as next steps into the future. Tonight, there'll be a presentation from myself and also Greg Graham, city attorney, regarding our overall progress. So I will actually start by giving a brief summary of some of the ideas and concepts that we're working on within the LDC. Greg will briefly discuss the extraction agreement. It's a new concept that he can talk about tonight, talk a little bit about the local government designate process, and then basically move on to the second reading of the moratorium and the options in front of council with that. So to start off with a little bit of background, the internal team of staff was formed after the land use committee work ended, that's actually about eight weeks ago. City council voted to end the land use committee work, and since that time, the last eight weeks, staff has been busy looking at our current, evaluating our current LDC standards, looking at best management practices from other jurisdictions within the state, to see what's working well and what's not working well. We have been meeting and discussing with the Colorado Oil and Gas Conservation Commission regarding the overall process and trying to learn more about how their system works. And finally, recently, we began drafting actual language for the land development code and the extraction agreement, so that we can move forward as directed by city council. I can tell you, overall, as a precursor to what you're going to hear, I believe this internal team has come up with an overall process that is intended to work as multiple layers in an overall system. It's not just one size fits all, as far as the solution goes. When we looked at some other communities, they are attempting to put all of their efforts and all of their provisions into a single document. Usually, that's the zoning ordinance. We are proposing a different model, whereby some of the protections are in the land development code, some are in the extraction agreement, and finally, the land, I'm sorry, the local government designate process. As part of our analysis, we looked at the overall city, and as it relates to the COGCC rules for where wells could be drilled. And this map is the overview of the city, and I have a closer one of the northern range. The yellow are areas that fall outside of the high-density designation by the COGCC. The red falls within that high-density designation, which means it's not available for drilling. Early on, there was a lot of initial discussion about the number of potential wells in Commerce City, being at 20 to the square mile times 45 square miles, which would be an extremely high number. Obviously, math is not my best skill. This map shows, though, that at 10-point square miles of available drilling windows, that it shows what we're up against, and also helps provide a little bit of a baseline about the geography of some of these places. They're obviously existing further out in some of our more rural agricultural parts of town. So first up, a discussion about our LDC amendments. As a reminder, prior to 2009, the city had no oil and gas regulations of any kind anywhere. When the LDC was rewritten in 2009, some basic provisions were added to basically start to begin to address the issue. Since that time, obviously, since this issue has come up, and namely, since the Adams County well, the AB number one well was started, council basically directed staff to start working on amendments, to do a few different things. And some of those goals are somewhat on opposite ends of a spectrum. On the one hand, the goal was to strengthen the protections for our residents. How can we do things to bolster our overall regulatory framework, so that the health, safety, and welfare of our residents is protected? While at the same time, we also wanted to ensure that those regulations were to the extent possible, and make sure that we weren't bringing undue legal exposure onto the city. Furthermore, we wanted to clarify the requirements that were in our regulations, and finally, we wanted to focus on the site issues within the LDC. The extraction agreement that you'll hear about a little later gets into other issues outside of the site, the surface issues, and gets into the downhole kinds of issues. So the draft of LDC amendment is contained in your packet. I will not go through that line by line, and instead, I'll just hit a few of the highlights. First of all, the proposed LDC amendment proposes an administrative approval. This is an area where we are hoping to get additional feedback from city council and the public as we move forward. This may be one that changes when it comes back to city council in June, but as of right now, it calls for administrative approval. It applies to existing wells that need to go back for a re-drilling process through what the COGCC calls a recomplete. Our current LDC does not address that classification of drilling, and therefore, there's an entire category that is not covered by our oil and gas process. So that represents a pretty significant change, and that was certainly an issue that some of our residents wanted to see addressed. We call for an increased notification process. The draft that's in your packet actually has the wrong language, so you can disregard that particular section. We are going to, in essence, call for a half-mile notification requirement. This would by far be the largest notification distance that we have compared to anything else, be it liquor licensing, conditional use permits, or sexually oriented businesses. The LDC calls for additional traffic mitigation, primarily through a traffic plan that has to be submitted and approved by the city. There's a variety of additional nuisance control measures contained in the land development code amendments, such as noise, dust, and odor controls that currently are not in there. There are a number of site development provisions, which include fencing and lighting, and even down to paint colors on some of the tanks. There's additional noise protections that the COGCC rules don't necessarily have. The land development code prohibits, and this is a pretty major change, this is probably one of the more aggressive elements in the land development code, it prohibits drilling operations in the floodplain. And when you look at a map of the northern range, that actually is going to end up being a pretty significant portion of the land area in the northern range. Will also hopefully help allay some fears regarding surface water contamination. If we know that the floodplains are a primary source of surface water, prohibiting them in the floodplains may go some way in helping protecting that said surface water. Prohibition of a few important things, including injection and disposal wells, that is an area that we obviously heard a lot about, and that I know city council was concerned about the presence of those wells in the city, so it's just an outright prohibition of those. We are researching impact fees, I would caution city council. This seems to be an area where there's certainly the least amount of information to draw upon, and we probably have to do the most amount of our own research and creation of how we would calculate those impact fees. This may be an element that we put a placeholder in the LDC and come back to you at a later date, simply because it appears to us, at least at this stage, require quite a bit of research. And then finally, and this is an important piece, this sets the table for the overall framework I was mentioning earlier. There's a requirement in the land development code proposed amendments that would say, "To receive an approval of your oil and gas permit, you must sign an extraction agreement." So this is an agreement that the city currently doesn't have. Council might remember, in the past, there was a great deal of discussion regarding a memorandum of understanding. That was the starting point for a discussion regarding this extraction agreement, and it's frankly changed and gotten strengthened to become this extraction agreement. So with that said, I'm going to introduce Mr. Graham, and he can talk to you more specifically about some of the extraction agreement specifics.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. I think Chris mentioned previously that the idea with the extraction agreement is to expand the protections. The extraction agreement is expanding those protections in accordance with the city's police power as a home rule municipality to protect its citizens. Of note, the extraction agreement has not been distributed to the public yet. One thing we are attempting to do is get some feedback from the industry. Before we do that, it's sort of a work in progress at this point. Nevertheless, these are the major provisions that we plan to or envision requiring in any extraction agreement. This would be an agreement that would be between the city and the operator, and it would be specific to each well site. Therefore, any negotiations with this extraction agreement or regarding this extraction agreement would have to do with the specific well site, the land, the area, the neighboring features, businesses, homes, if there are any. As you can see on the slide, some of the significant provisions from the extraction agreement include a requirement for soil sampling. This is a baseline requirement, so prior to any operations, beginning any operations, the operator would have to obtain soil samples from the well site. That could be looked at later. We're increasing the setbacks based on the COGCC rules, so the setbacks would be closer to 1,250 feet, as opposed to 150, 350. We would prohibit drilling within certain distance from the Arsenal or Bar Lake. The MOU would also have noise mitigation requirements, limitations on the hours of operation, and would institute a water quality monitoring program. Other significant provisions in the extraction agreement would be water and wastewater disposal, enclosed loop system, pitless system, certain fracking fluid requirements, greener fracking fluids, information about the makeup of those fluids, spill containment requirements, as well as air quality monitoring. Most of these, the fracking fluid requirements, spill containment, and air quality would be in accordance with certain best management practices that much of the industry is already doing. This would be in the extraction agreement, it would require them, the operator, to comply with these types of provisions. One of the reasons it's called an extraction agreement and not an MOU is because, as Chris mentioned earlier, an MOU is a memorandum of understanding. This has teeth to it. Once the operator signs this agreement, then they're bound to the provisions of this agreement, and a failure to comply with the provisions of this agreement, the violation of this agreement or the LDC could result in their permit being pulled. So unlike an MOU where the parties just walk away from it, this actually does have a little additional teeth, if you will. That's pretty much it.
Thanks, Mr. Graham. So just to summarize the overall approach, as far as the work that's been done over the last seven or eight weeks, again, we have different layers of protection that are attempting to work at, be a little bit more nuanced in our overall level of control. The local government designate program is something that we've been talking with the COGCC about. Previously, the city, with very little oil and gas activity, has not been that involved in the local government designate program. So as a result, staff has gone to the COGCC for some training. How does their program work? When they send out, how do you navigate their website? If you've seen it, it's fraught with acronyms, and it's not the most user-friendly site. And we've also been trying to get a handle on what types of conditions of approval could the city request on various specific permit applications. And if council has heard, the governor's task force that just concluded last week emphasized the local government designate process and the conditions of approval that might be able to be placed on specific permit applications, as what they saw as the best direction forward. So as a result, staff has been working with the COGCC in an effort, so that we are up to speed on the best ways that we can maximize the possible protections that that process may give us. Furthermore, the LDC requirements are really the base level that we want to ensure apply to everyone, every time, and a lot of the requirements that might go sort of above and beyond, certainly the COGCC rules, those provisions that, again, we're trying to assert our home rule authority with, but that didn't want to jeopardize the LDC standards for, a lot of those made it into the extraction agreement template that is currently being worked on. Intended to, again, work together to provide protections where legally possible. Taken as a whole, hopefully, this provides what we think might even become a model for other jurisdictions, and according to our analysis, this will prove to be, as a set, some of the more powerful set of regulations in the state. As a part of this process, council directed staff to work with other stakeholders. We have sent some requests to the industry, and have not received much feedback from them or even response. We did schedule a follow-up meeting, we've had one meeting a few weeks back with the citizens who were on the land use committee. We followed up with another meeting with that group last week, actually. It was a good conversation, they did have some input. They had a lot of their concerns, they had a few, but certainly, a number of them were related to the Rocky Mountain Arsenal, National Wildlife Refuge, and some of the environmental impacts of the wildlife refuge, and what that might mean for drilling. They were concerned about the lack of information from the 1960s injection wells, and what has happened to those, the chemicals that were in those injection wells. They were also concerned about the plumes that are emanating from the arsenal, and what drilling might do to those plumes, and if it disturbs those plumes. They specifically requested that the city do its own independent environmental analysis of the arsenal, and it's both the injection wells from the 1960s and also the plumes that are existing. We did discuss the fact that there is quite a bit of study being done by the Army and Tri-County, and I think, you know, if they were here, they would indicate that Commerce City should have its own independent analysis of those issues. Residents also requested more public input, both within this process and also in the final process that gets implemented, and I think they certainly wanted to see a, and I don't think they were that supportive of the administrative approval process. And finally, they raised a number of environmental concerns that are present right now. I know that there was some livestock that was on the east side of the airport, and the issues were raised that that may be an indication of some of the impacts of oil and gas wells, so we spent a fair amount of time talking about that. So all in all, I think it was a pretty positive meeting, but there was still a lot of input that the residents wanted to provide regarding, primarily, there were obviously other issues. I don't want to suggest this is it. They provided a number of issues, but I tried to summarize, I think, what I would say we spent the most of our time discussing. So with that, that is all background for where we go with the LDC amendments, and in May, we're going to, there's going to be two different, sort of somewhat parallel tracks. There's an education element that Communications Director Michelle Halsted had presented to city council. The parallel to that, we're also going to be doing open houses about the land development code amendments specifically. And so here, you can see some of the next steps. There's some open houses the week of May 14th. We're going to have a study session with both planning commission and city council. Then, we plan to bring the proposed, if it all stays on schedule, we plan to bring the actual LDC amendment language itself to planning commission on June 5th, followed by a first reading with city council on June 18th, and a second reading on July 2nd. So that's the schedule of moving forward. That also provides, hopefully, some background for council as council considers its options regarding the moratorium. From staff's perspective, I really think council has four options. Vote to approve the moratorium as written, or as voted on in the first reading. You could also vote to approve the moratorium with a shorter timeframe. Council could vote to deny the moratorium, and just move forward without that in place. Or obviously, council could continue the second reading again for a specific length of time. So with that, staff, the team is here, the attorney- So with that, staff, the team is here, the attorney that the city is using to assist these efforts, Phil Barber, is also here, so we're available for any questions you might have.
Mr. Benson?
Yes, thank you.
You're off.
Okay, there we go. I want to congratulate our whole staff, everybody that's worked on this, for the way that you've handled this matter. I think that we're gonna have a better overall response to the fracking issue than any city in the state of Colorado. I don't know about cities outside the state of Colorado, but I do know what some of the other cities have done. This is a very well thought-out approach. Instead of doing something that would be in the nature of a stopgap measure in the way of a moratorium, this is gonna be a permanent solution that can roll one way or the other depending on the situation. So I think it's a very great way to proceed. Is the extraction agreement going to take the place of an MOU, or are you talking about having an MOU in place and then an extraction agreement for each individual well?
I'll answer that question, Mr. Benson. Now, the extraction agreement would be the only agreement. There wouldn't be an MOU.
Okay, that's what I was thinking.
The MOU is essentially morphed into the extraction agreement as we were going through this process.
Right, and as you said, that will be an enforceable contract.
That's correct, and that's one of the reasons it would not be an MOU is because there are, for, you know, violations of the MOU, there are consequences to the operator, and in particular, the loss of the permit.
And who would the parties to the extraction agreement be?
It would be the operator and the city.
Okay. Does the COGCC get involved in that at all?
Not, not based on our plan, no.
All right. So as a condition to the city okaying a permit, then the operator would have to execute an extraction agreement?
That's correct.
Is that correct?
That is correct.
And then if they didn't want to do that, then I guess we go to battle or whatever.
That's true, and one thing, and I don't recall if Mr. Kramer made this comment or not, but these extraction agreements will be subject to some negotiation, as I mentioned, based on the site, the well site itself. So if there are characteristics of the well site that make it impossible or nearly impossible to comply, those are the kinds of issues that we would negotiate. But you're correct, if they fail to enter into the extraction agreement, then they wouldn't be allowed to get their permit.
Okay. Now, it was something that we heard, I guess it was last Thursday at the DU Law School, where they had a panel discussion about fracking, and that was the same day that the governor's task force came out with his, with its draft, which I guess pushed for cooperation and collaboration. I seem to see those two words in there several times. We heard that there's been an issue about water usage, and we heard at that meeting that 85% of the water in Colorado goes for agricultural uses, which means that it can be used over again because it's gonna sink down into the aquifer. The water that's used for fracking is gone forever essentially because it's going down maybe to 10,000 feet, but it's a very small amount of water compared to all of the water usage in Colorado, and I thought that was significant because we've heard a lot about where we're wasting all this water, and I guess it is a waste to some extent in that it's water that's gone forever, unlike water that's used for agricultural uses. But I think we're on the right track, and I think that we ought to put off the moratorium for 60, 90 days, whatever it takes, because the 60 days puts us into, Mr. Kramer, did you say July the 2nd or the 3rd for the second reading on the Land Development Code?
As the schedule reads right now, you know, provided nothing changes, the second reading would be scheduled for July 2nd.
Well, what amount of time would you recommend if we were gonna vote to delay a vote on a moratorium?
Well, I, Mr. Benson, I guess it depends on what the goals of council are. If the goal is to wait until after the second reading, then that would require more math, and I think that would, the 90 days would cover that.
But in order to give you and the staff and Mr. Graham time to work out all the changes that need to be made to the Land Development Code and to work out the form of an extraction agreement, is 60 days gonna be enough, or is it gonna be 90 days?
I don't believe 60 days gets us to the July 2nd.
Okay, so you're saying 90 days, and that ought to get us to where we want to be, and we'll know at that time whether we're gonna have this worked out.
I believe that's correct. I can look at my calendar to confirm.
And again, a moratorium is only a stopgap measure. It's not like this is a permanent solution that we're working on here, and I think that our staff and our attorney, Mr. Barber, for the work he's done on it ought to be congratulated for working this out. Thank you. That's all I have.
Mr. Bullock?
I want to thank you, Mr. Kramer, and your staff, and everybody that worked on this. These are great suggestions, and the extraction agreement is a great add-on to the Land Development Code. This is going to be a template for other cities to follow. When I was at the conference we were at on Friday, I talked to council people from Erie and Boulder and everything, and the one thing I said, I said, keep your eye on Commerce City. We're gonna come out with something that's gonna be so spectacular that it's gonna be your template for all the cities in the state of Colorado that want to follow this suit. This goes above and beyond what most of the residents asked for as far as safety, air, water, and land quality to make sure that their health and safe are being guaranteed. I can only say that I agree with Mr. Benson that we just continue for another 90 days, and at that time, we take up the measure then, and I think that it will be a done deal.
Mr. Macaldonie?
Rather than speak at length, I'll just echo the comments from the first two speakers. I think the work that's gone on since we ended the work of the committee and handed the task to get into the nitty-gritty details to the team that took this, I think, is very, very worthy of commendation. You guys have done a phenomenal job. I think the, what's clear is that, this is, I mean, from the onset, this has been an incredibly charged topic, and we've had lots of input from lots of people, and what I've seen you do is be able to step back and take some fresh perspectives on this and come forward with some very creative solutions. I don't know that any of us at the onset would have seen this sort of three-pronged approach or this sort of puzzle piece approach that's taken shape, so my hat's off for all the work that's gone into this. I know lots of energy and blood, sweat, and tears to get to this point, so thank you very much. I look forward to the public sessions to get some further input and hopefully tighten it up just ever, ever so bit further, and again, thank you.
Mr. Douglas?
Yes, thank you guys for working on this extensively as you have. I met with Brian Bagley on Thursday at State Missile Regulations Oil and Gas Development, and Longmont is doing pretty much the same thing we're doing, they're just calling it something different, and I think that it's a good strategy. It really makes the oil and gas company come to the table and see that we're, that has some teeth in it, and they're gonna be dealt with seriously here, that our citizens are, have come forward, and also have stamped this as well. You know, I look at this education piece for the open house, and you know, in June, we have a city fest, and is there any way we could have that on the calendar to have it on to the outreach, maybe like the Thursday? I'm not sure which date we designate it for the city fest. Do you know what that is, Brent, at this time?
I think it's the second Thursday in June, and we have discussed it would be a nice opportunity to have a table or a booth at that event.
Okay. And then while we're on this here with the 90 days and all, I noticed there was some activity down there off of Highway 88 near Third Creek, which is not too far from the floodplain area. Do you know if that operator's just doing some maintenance, or what exactly is going on? Do you know? Chris?
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Douglas, are we referring to the activity at 88th Avenue and the old Buckley alignment?
Yes.
Just by Second Creek?
Yes.
Yeah, we just got a report of that as well just a little bit ago. We will be looking into that first thing in the morning. I'm very curious to know what that is myself, so we're gonna be looking into that right away.
Because based, I mean, as far as the demographics on the map, that shows that's in city limits. Is that correct?
That is in city limits. You're correct, yeah.
All right, thank you.
There would be a variety of issues with that if that turned out to actually be some sort of drilling activity. There'd be a variety of issues there.
Okay.
They don't have a COGCC permit.
Really?
They don't have a city permit. There'd be a, there would be a whole host of issues with that if it turned out to actually be drilling activity.
All right, thank you.
Okay. Seeing no one else, I would, I would like to also thank the staff. This is turning out much better than what I could ever have expected to have put into our own regulations and still meet within the guidelines of the state regulations and what's called out. So I think you guys are doing a tremendous job. I support extending the moratorium out in another 90 days. The reason is, is I like to leave that first reading on the table because if there was any type of activity to occur that we wanted to call a special meeting and pass that moratorium to stop any, any type of activity, if and when it were to occur during that 90 days, we have that ability to do so. But I think after talking to staff, there are no current permits out there in the application process. Would you talk about the Custy Well and what's going on with applications and where we're at there? Because from what I get from staff, there's no risk right now of any upcoming activity.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of council, so as a part of our LGD process, the Custy Well was really the first one where we had a chance to discuss the specifics of a particular application with the COGCC. We requested a great deal of follow-up information through the COGCC of the applicant. We wanted to see, starting with a site plan that may have resulted in other questions or requests that we had. I believe there's also a series of suggested conditions of approval that have been worked out with the COGCC that would eventually be added to that permit. So that was all sitting there teed up, and we basically requested to receive this information so we knew how to move forward. That request has been made, and it's been sitting there in the COGCC system with no response from the operator. So there really has been, I would say the progress on that permit application has grown to a halt, and not only has there not been anything that was requested, nothing has been submitted, and there hasn't been any communication either. So from a staff perspective, it certainly, if activity occurred, it would be somewhat out of the blue at this point.
Okay.
And when I say activity, I mean permit, application activity, not drilling.
Right, gotcha. Seeing no further discussion by the, Mr. Moreno?
Just a couple of things on this item. I think one of the biggest, one of the most important aspects of what you've put together is the prohibition on injection wells. We recently saw an article that came out in the Colorado Independent that is starting to directly link these injection wells with some of the rise in seismic activity in the west and in Colorado. Specifically, they also mentioned the Arsenal and the injection wells that happened there in the 60s and how it caused earthquakes here in Commerce City, and how if this continues, where fracking wastewater is disposed into these injection wells, that some of the same things can happen again. I respect what the governor tried to do in setting up his task force. I do think they missed the mark. I don't think local communities ever anticipated or ever wanted to get into the oil and gas regulation business, but we've found ourselves that we've had to in order to protect our residents and to be able to address their concerns in a more sufficient manner. I do think Commerce City is gonna be the model on what communities can do, especially if we're successful, and I'm hoping that we are. But I do think we should support a, an extension of the moratorium long enough for us to get some of these protections in place.
Mr. Mayor, could I respond to that real quick, just for one moment?
Sure.
In regards to the injection well prohibition, that is currently in the LDC amendments. If that, for whatever reason, one of the benefits of this process, the system that we came up with, if the industry found that to be, you know, if they felt that that was preempted for some reason, and I'm not sure if it is or isn't, but if they did, we still have the opportunity to take that out of our LDC and put that into our agreement and still get the protection if we wanted. That's just by way of illustration. I'm not saying that injection wells are or are not preempted, just trying to illustrate the benefit of that system. One other thing, I would be remiss, Mr. Barber has asked us to say as many times as we can, he has warned us to go into this process with our eyes wide open as we do the extraction agreement. You know, some of those provisions, if they are gonna make operating wells more difficult, the only gas industry will certainly negotiate to the fullest extent they can with that agreement. So just because we set the template up and we have a number of provisions a mile from the Arsenal and 1,250 feet from any existing residences, you know, he has warned us multiple times that those will all be challenged mightily by the industry. With that said, they also haven't responded to anything we've said so far, so we'll set the tone.
All right, thank you. Now, since the lights aren't working, is there any other discussion that needs to take place? Mr. Benson?
I don't have any discussion, just wanted to move that we postpone consideration of ordinance 1880 for 90 days.
Okay, thank you. Is there a second to that? Mr. Macaldonie? I have a motion and a second to move that out for 90 days. Mr. Attorney?
Just a couple of quick comments to buttress what has been said. First of all, I think continuation of the moratorium is the proper way to proceed because that keeps Commerce City at a low profile rather than moving us to the top of the list where we would be in the sites of anyone that wanted to challenge the city government in this whole area. Right now, of course, we're not in the sites, and it's expected that proceeding in this manner, it'll keep us in a more, in a better context of everyone involved. The citizens are protected in that as the mayor has indicated. If there should be something that is not to our liking, that appears to be activity by the oil and gas companies within the next 90 days, we can call a special meeting within, with seven days' notice and bring this matter up and impose the moratorium if that should become necessary. And I just wanted to state that publicly so that the citizens are fully aware of that protection. We're not giving away anything by continuing this moratorium. What it does do is allow our staff the opportunity to finalize these documents and bring them back to you then for approval. And that having been said, I also want to thank Greg Graham from my office, Phil Barber, Special Counsel for the City on Oil and Gas Matters, and the city staff for getting this accomplished because this approach of using the extraction agreement supplemental to the LDC, I think, is a very appropriate way and even a unique way to proceed because, let's face it, if an oil and gas company is seeking approval of a permit and they can't get the permit unless they agree to an extraction agreement with the provisions that we're asking for, we're in a much better negotiating position because time is generally of the essence for the oil and gas company in that situation. Can they afford to litigate that issue on the extraction agreement or in a better position to reach some agreement with the city and agree to an extraction agreement to avoid the litigation and therefore they can get the permit and proceed? So I think we're proceeding in the right direction. we're proceeding in the right direction, and I fully recommend the moratorium continuance that has been moved for.
Right, thank you. Before we move forward, is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak on this issue? Seeing no one, Mr. Attorney, read the title?
Title of the ordinance 1880 reads, "An Ordinance Creating and Declaring a Six-Month Moratorium on Any Land Use Including Surface or Subsurface Use for the Conduct of Any Oil and Gas Operations That Include Hydraulic Fracturing or Drilling Activities Within the City Limits of the City of Commerce City."
Thank you.
Might add, Mr. Mayor, to give an exact date instead of just 90 days, if the motion-maker would agree to put a date of July 16, 2012 for the continuance.
Thank you. Is that acceptable to the motion-maker?
Yes, it is.
How about to the second?
Yes.
Okay. We have a, title's been read. You have any other discussion, Mr. Bullock?
I was just going to ask Bob, when you read the title like that, we are not voting on a moratorium. We're voting on a continuing of the moratorium. Okay, I just want that to be said out there, so nobody thinks we are voting on a moratorium.
Correct. Thank you. I'll call for the roll call vote now. Let the record show, the motion is carried unanimously. Next item on the agenda, we go into study items, and the first item is medical marijuana licensing, and our deputy city attorney is gonna make a presentation.
Thank you, sir. As most of you know, we have a moratorium in place on medical marijuana licensing here in Commerce City. It runs concurrently with the state moratorium, which expires July 1. And by July 1, we need to either have a licensing program in place, or we need to have an ordinance that prohibits these kinds of establishments within the city. So, with that background, I wanted to go over kind of what the state requirements are right now under the Medical Marijuana Act, as well as our own current ordinances that are in place that impact that, and then talk a little bit about how we might proceed in doing a licensing program. So, the first thing that's important to know is that there are three types of medical marijuana licenses. The Medical Marijuana Center is the place where most of the medical marijuana products are gonna be sold. They can sell plants, they can sell the prepackaged medical marijuana-infused products and medical marijuana. The medical marijuana-infused products manufacturing is just that. It allows for this manufacturing of basically edibles with marijuana infused into them. And those products can only be sold from the Medical Marijuana Infused Products Manufacturing licensee to a Medical Marijuana Center, who would then sell them to the public. Both of those licenses, you have to have one of those licenses in order to obtain an optional premises cultivation, which basically allows you to grow medical marijuana. Those premises can be adjacent to or not adjacent to the other licensed premises. It is a dual licensing program, meaning that both the state and the local government will license these businesses. State law sets out some minimum standards and allows local governments to impose stricter standards. So, some of the restrictions that come into place by the state are these locational restrictions. They can't be within 1,000 feet of these schools, an alcohol or drug treatment program, the principal campus of a college, university, or seminary, or residential childcare facility. The medical marijuana facilities must also comply with local zoning. As you'll see, we're much more restrictive. First of all, all of these facilities would be required to obtain a conditional use permit through a hearing before the planning commission and then before you. They're only permitted in industrial zone districts, and they may not be within 1,000 feet of all of these places. The exterior boundary of any public zone district, the residential zone district, an occupied mobile home, you can read them all, churches, educational institutions, licensed childcare, drug and alcohol rehabilitation facilities, group homes. It goes on and on. There is a map, if you'd like to see it, of the general area that would be allowed, where these facilities would basically be eligible to locate. It's fairly narrow, so I can bring that up at the end if you all would like to see that. State prohibits certain people from being licensees. These prohibitions also prohibit, apply to employees of these facilities as well. They have to be of good moral character. They can't be a licensed physician making patient recommendations. They can't be under the age of 21. The next one is fairly interesting, can't be delinquent in paying taxes, government-issued student loans, or child support. Can't be convicted of a felony ever involving controlled substances. They can't have been convicted of a felony or finished serving it within the five years preceding their application. Sheriffs, deputy sheriffs, police officers, prosecutors, or employees of state or local licensing authorities can't be licensees. A person who's a primary caregiver whose authority's been revoked. And they have to have, everybody that's applying has to be a Colorado resident. Owners of the facility have to be a resident for two years prior to the application. So, what we would propose with regard to licensing here in Commerce City is that we would maintain the current city standards related to location. So, all of those restrictions that were in those previous slides would still apply. We would follow the state regulations and standards related to the licensing and operations. In my packet to you all, I gave you some of those. There's some very comprehensive regulations on security, surveillance, kinds of issues, advertising, locks that they have to use. So, we would kind of adopt those locally. We would make obtaining the CUP a prerequisite for applying for a medical marijuana facility license, so that way we're not starting with application until they know that their zoning is in place. We would make the city clerk the local licensing authority with the power to grant or deny licenses based on the state and local requirements. But then we would appoint a hearing officer for hearings to determine contested denials and complaints against licensees. So, the next steps that we can see is that we would need to amend the Land Development Code, Section 215249, as well as the definitions. We need to adopt an ordinance establishing the licensing program. We need to set the fees, appoint a hearing officer, and finalize the application forms. So, now I would open it up to you all for questions and comments and concerns. Sir?
Thank you. What are the, any of the council member have questions? Mr. Bullock?
Could we see a copy of the map? I'd like to see where, any place on, in Commerce City where it could be located.
So, it's the purple, the very darkest purple, if you can see. I can't, my eyes aren't that good. I can't see it up there. So, the dark purple areas are where they'd be allowed as conditional use.
Well, if I could, if I could add a quick caveat to the map, if you recall, the Land Development Code requires that these facilities be at least 1,000 feet from a number of different land uses. This is a map that shows property in the city that's zoned industrial, that's at least 1,000 feet away from residential. It does not necessarily indicate that properties that are shown in purple meet any of the other separation requirements in the Land Development Code. So, the actual number of eligible properties is probably less than what's shown on this map.
What I was also going to ask, thanks, Brian, that helps me with my second question. Basically, in any given one of those purple spots, once, if one was allowed, one is only gonna be the one allowed in those purple spots, because there basically wouldn't be another 1,000-foot separation for another one to be allowed in that same area.
That's right. There would have to be another 1,000-foot separation.
So, I, judging by the two purple spots, basically, we could have two sites, knowing how big those spots are, maybe two and a half, a half of a site, you know. But you also have to take into consideration all the other setbacks for all the other land development, I mean, setbacks that you put in there. So, it might even decrease it down to only one site in the whole city that we could do this.
That's absolutely possible.
Thank you.
Mr. Benson?
I think that light was from a previous.
Okay, did you turn it off, please? Mr. Moreno?
Fracking and marijuana, did you want us to keep us here till midnight? I have a couple of questions regarding this. The state regulations, I completely understand. Good moral character, that seems very ambiguous and not legally defensible.
It is, it applies in liquor licensing as well. There is a specific reference to a state statute. And basically, what it means is that a person can't have been convicted of a crime of moral turpitude. So, that's really what it translates to. So, then you have to do a lot of thinking about what moral turpitude is, and what it's not. Sometimes it requires some case law study to find out what, if something has qualified as an offense of moral turpitude or not.
Okay. Can you go back to the last slide that you were at?
Let me see. The next step slide?
Yes.
Let me see.
Or actually, the first slide where you call out the different types of medical marijuana businesses or?
Licenses?
Licenses, yes, thank you. Those currently would all be permitted, correct? We don't have, we don't prohibit one type of license over the other.
We have not, we have not, you have not taken any action to prohibit any type of licensee within the city.
Would any of those not generate tax revenue for the city?
Well, presumably, the Grow would be the only one that wouldn't. Although the medical marijuana-infused product manufacturing might be just, if it's a wholesale, Bob, may not generate sales, it wouldn't generate sales tax. It would only generate maybe a use tax or something on the property.
Right. A wholesale sale, of course, is not subject to our tax. But any retail sale would be, and of course, any facility was, that was constructed for the, for any of those purposes would generate use tax for its construction. But the product sale itself, it has to be a retail sale to generate the tax.
Can each of those licenses be consolidated into one facility? Is there any restriction on that?
The only ones that could be consolidated would be the optional premise cultivation with either of the other two into one, into one building. Otherwise, they're all separate licenses, and with that 1,000-foot setback, I think they would have to be separated by that 1,000 feet.
Would we mimic the state's categorization of these licenses and license each of these separately at the city level as well?
Yes.
Okay. Can you, sorry, go to the next steps slide? Okay. I guess, to be honest, I'm not sure of any recommendations I have for these. I do agree with the city clerk's office, serving as the licensing authority, given the experience there with, similarly with liquor licensing authority as well. But I guess, in terms of setting fees at the local level, do we then just mimic the state level as well? How, I mean, how does that work?
We would work with finance, and finance would analyze basically what our steps would be in order to licensees these businesses, because our fees can only, we can only impose fees to the extent of the services that we're providing. So, there's gonna be background check costs and those kinds of things. We're gonna check with the state a little bit to see how, because lots of these are coordinated and they happen concurrently, so how much can we piggyback off of theirs? How much would we do separately? Those kinds of things. And then Roger would come back with a resolution with regard to the fees.
I would recommend that staff actually be involved in setting those fees. Regarding the state law, though, in your estimation, Karen, would you say that the state law is more aggressive, more limiting than our local regulations that we have in place right now?
With regard to a lot of the surveillance and security, yes. I think they're much more thorough and comprehensive than we have in place right now. I mean, they get down to the type of locks that people have to install on their buildings. And we didn't reach that when we passed our zoning ordinance. We kind of were up against the wall, and we put some stuff in there that we knew we needed, but not, we didn't give it the thought that the state has given it.
Sure. And I particularly remember, I was not on council at the time, but Councilman McAldonny actually making the recommendation that surveillance and alarms and cameras be included on site.
That's right.
Okay, I guess that's all the questions I have. I would just recommend that we further codify the state law in terms of the regulations about who can open a business. I think those are mostly in line with what, where we need to be going.
Okay.
Mr. McAldonny?
Thank you. And thank you, Ms. Stevens, for bringing this back. Again, not unlike the comments on the fracking discussion, again, I think there's a good puzzle piece approach that's been taken relative to the state guidelines. And again, to your point, there are exceptional details laid out in much of that state guideline that we haven't had a chance to dig into yet. So, it makes sense in this, in this regard to leverage those. As far as next steps go, I mean, I think on the first slide that you were referencing relative to the three license types, it would probably help maybe to amend that slide or in the notes to call out the specific combinations that are eligible or would be eligible as it's been laid out so far, so that's clear. And then I think the fees are gonna be an interesting learning to figure out what the costs for the city are, because I know, as we've had in other fee discussions, we can't, it's not a revenue producer. It's gotta cover the cost of performing that task. So, I'm keen to see what that, what that looks like at the end of the day. As far as the hearing officer goes, is this a similar process to what we do for, like, the administrative hearings where we've had some of the changes?
Yes. Yes, it is. We would, we would be looking at it along those lines.
Okay. All right. Well, thank you.
Mr. Douglas?
Yeah, thanks, Karen, for putting us on a study session. On these MMED business license, that's the state, those are state license fees? That's not fees that we have, right?
Right. The, I sent you state fees along with the packet, yes.
Now, could you explain type 1 through type 3 centers? But, I mean, these fees are pretty high. Is that based on the size of facility and what they're doing as far as?
I really don't know. Yeah, I'm sorry. I didn't, I didn't research. I just pulled it off the website, so you could kind of see what they were charging. But I looked at the same thing, and I have no idea what a center 1 is versus a center 2.
All right. If we could get some more clarity on that, that'd be great. And then, you know, Denver went ahead and opened up some dispensaries and all for, you know, people who wanted to be in that business. But then the federal, the feds came in, and they had their own rules, regulations. And some of those businesses got closed down, even though they were approved by the state. So, you know, that, how's that gonna play out here in Commerce City? If we, you know, we go through all this work here, not saying that I want this here, but then if, you know, the then if, you know, the feds come in and they want to trump things, how's that work?
It's, it is quite scary, actually. We've had some letters from the attorney, not us personally, but the Attorney General has indicated that they would even take the position that, they could take the position that staff that processed these applications violated federal law as well, that it was a conspiracy kind of thing. So there's, there is some risk that's involved in that. They haven't gone that far yet, but you're right. They've contacted businesses. I think Boulder was the most recently contacted by the Attorney General, indicating that, because some of their businesses are licensed that are well within the thousand feet that the state has adopted. And so the Attorney General has basically taken the position that you're not complying with state law, and so they're going to close those businesses down.
Okay. And as far as limiting the areas where this could occur, if it comes down to one, I mean, you know, might have issues there of singling out or not loading people in, in that process just so we, like I said, once again, not one in this inner city, but some sort of lottery process or something?
You mean, limiting the number of businesses that we could have here, having?
Right, just going through a process of, I mean, I guess picking from a hat or something, I don't know. Lottery processes as far as, you know, if you inquired to do business here and you were selected out of that process and not just devoted, just to one, one person or company?
You could certainly cap it if you, if you want to, the number, and then you could base, you know, I mean, it could be by lottery, or it could simply be by the time that people filed their applications, first come, first served kind of thing. But I think what you'll find is that with the restrictions in the CUP, it's going to be pretty much first come, first served, and there's going to be maybe two in the, if that, in the city. I don't think this is going to be, with the restriction on zoning, this isn't going to be something that's going to, we're going to have a lot of these businesses.
It's pretty extensive. All right, thank you.
Mr. McElhany, you have something further?
I was just going to say, the question about the designations I found on the state website, the type one, two, and three, it relates to the number of registered primary patients that a facility has. So a type one being 300, type two being between 301 and 500, and then a type three being five, it looks like 5,001 and above. I assume that's supposed to be 501 and above, but.
Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Moreno, you have something further?
So I guess, thank you for finding that out, Councilman McElhany. So I guess would it, based on the state licensing structure, the more patients you serve, the higher cost of the business permit. Just wanted to follow up on something that Councilman Douglas brought up regarding current medical marijuana facilities, and ask your opinion legally, Ms. Stevens. Those dispensaries that are located within that thousand-foot requirement that has now been imposed by state law, and they, and a lot of those dispensaries have received that letter from the Attorney General that you referenced, can that state law be applied retroactively? I mean, these businesses were already open. I mean, that's where you get into legal.
Yeah, I mean, I think, I think that the federal government could do that, because they basically have the authority to shut it down based on federal law, right? And so what they've said, what the administration has said is, if you're complying with the state requirements, then we're not coming after you. And they apparently are taking it as, if you're within that thousand feet, even though you might have been established there beforehand, you're not really complying with state law, and we, as a federal government, are going to come and get you with regard to the federal law. So whether they could, they could retroactively, the state could retroactively do it? They could have, but they decided not to. But the federal government is going to come in from a different angle, and they're just going to simply say, it's illegal, and we're going to close you down.
And from a city staff perspective, I don't know if you've looked this far in advance, but if we do get an application and a business does open, who then is in charge of enforcement and monitoring the business? Would it be the police department? Would it be the finance department?
Well, it probably depends on which part of the enforcement we're talking about. Books and records, you could see where that would be, fall within the finance department. They would do an audit of it, right? To make sure that the finances are all in place. If you're talking about enforcement to make sure that the patients match up, you know, they've got a complete list of patients, that's going to be law enforcement, because they have the ability to get on the database that the, that the state maintains as opposed to some of the rest of us. They'd have more immediate access.
And, let's see if I have anything else. The, regarding the hearing officer, would that be a city staff member? What are your recommendations there?
I would recommend that we hire an outside counsel attorney that has experience in conducting hearings, to do those hearings for us. We already have one right now, although we may need to come back, because I think she's going in-house someplace. But, but that would be my, my recommendation, is that you get a licensed attorney who has some sort of hearing experience.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. McElhany, your light still on? No problem. Councilwoman Carson?
Ms. Stevens, can you tell me, if somebody applied for one of those permits, would that require a public hearing? So businesses that would be located surrounding that would have an ability to speak?
A conditional use permit? Yes, that would be a public hearing.
Thank you.
Seeing no one else, thank you for your presentation.
Thank you.
We'll move on to the next item on the agenda.
So we'll just move ahead with the ordinances Karen has presented.
Do you want direction from the council?
Just as long as, I'm not hearing any objections to what has been presented, so I assume then we'll just move ahead, and then it'll be presented at the appropriate time.
Anybody on council disagree with that? Mr. Moreno, your light's on?
Just to prepare to make a motion if necessary, Mr. Yeller.
I don't think we need the motion. We'll, this is sort of a.
Right. That's why I was asking.
Direction, so.
Is there anybody on the council that has any issues with moving forward in that manner? Just let me know. Seeing none, go ahead and move forward with putting together an ordinance. Next item on the agenda is administrative council business. And the first portion of the administrative council business will be a presentation of the JAG program grant by Grant Administrator Noel.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of city council. Just real briefly, this is one that's not going to take a long discussion, hopefully. But in late March, the city was notified that we were awarded $14,328 as part of the Bureau of Justice JAG program. The funds are located to local, start over, the funds are awarded to local municipalities through a formula process, which is basically calculated by comparing each municipality within the state on its violent crimes and population. Once the funds are awarded, an application must be created and then submitted, informing JAG on how we would like to spend these funds. So the funds can be used for law enforcement programs, prosecution of court programs, prevention of education programs, corrections and community correction programs, drug treatment and enforcement programs, planning, evaluation, and technology improvement programs, and crime victim and witness programs. This year, what we would like to do is we may purchase items such as radar equipment, accident investigation software, and/or tasers. This information is just being presented to you, and so there's no formal action that I need from you or anything. It's just informational. And then what it does is it opens up kind of a comment period for you to ask any type of questions on this, as well as any citizens in the audience. The application is due in about a month, and so it should be ready to go. We've got it in the draft form right now, so it's available for you to look at if you should so desire. So, questions?
Council have any questions for Ms. Noel? Seeing none, thanks. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to comment on this JAG? Seeing no one, thank you. Proceed forward.
Okay, we'll submit the application.
Thank you. We're still in administrative council business. I would like to bring up that a staff needs to look at the light, the system up here. Every time one of the council members lights the lights up, if I try to move that forward with the next button to remove that person and move to the next person, it removes two or it'll layer two behind each other, where you can't see them. And then if a council person takes their light off, it also removes someone else. So I've had a heck of a time up here tonight. It's not working properly. Just have our technical department take a look at it.
Mayor Ford, if I'm not mistaken, I believe our information technology director, John Ford, is in the process of replacing these lights.
Okay, great, thank you. I see Mr. McElhany.
Hi, thank you. Really quick item. I think most of council probably received this. I received a communication from Richie Castro, who we all affectionately know as the History Hunter, who has been working diligently on developing his History Hunter program. They are working toward a May 26th show and fundraising opportunity with the goal of generating enough money to put on a full community production of the History Hunter the Musical in November of this year at the Denver Civic Center. And they're currently seeking prizes or gifts to help auction off at that event as a fundraiser to help reach that objective. I was wondering if we might take an approach we've taken in the past, which is to take something that we, an asset that we have in the golf course, and offer a couple foursomes with carts at a minimum to that event as a tool for them to help with their fundraising. I didn't know if anybody else had other ideas or would be supportive of that, but he is certainly doing great things, and it's nice to support one of Commerce City's own in those efforts.
I don't have a problem with it. You want to ask the council for that support?
I would.
Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye to moving forward with that request. Say nay if you oppose. You have direction, it's, staff can move forward and get some foursomes together, and maybe if they have any other ideas, they can bring it back to us.
That'd be great, thank you.
Councilman Benson?
Yes, thank you. I had a couple of items. I know Mr. Douglas brought up a Leadership Training Institute workshop that the NLC is putting on. I just got, we got this in our packets tonight, and I got an email about it, I think about last Wednesday in my email. I'd like to go to this also, after talking to Mr. Bullock. Mr. Bullock is on the steering committee for the Leadership Training Institute, and he thinks that this would be a formulating effective economic development policy. So I'd like to use my discretionary funds to partly pay for this, or to pay for it as far as they go. Anybody have any objection to that?
I would just ask if you have an idea of the amount of the expenditure?
I can't tell you exactly what it's going to cost.
Yeah, what did we approve last week?
$700, I think is what.
That's wrong.
Okay, hang on a second. Let's, I'll come back to you, Mr. Douglas, but $700 is what we approved last week. I'll move through everybody else that has comments on this topic, and then we'll go into whoever has more administrative business. So if you have additional administrative business, other than this right now, please turn your light off so I can keep track of who's wanting to speak on this item.
Okay, but I do have other things.
That's fine. But right now, let me handle this one.
Sure, did it go off?
The total for Mr. Douglas would be about $900. And that's flight, the registration, and the hotel room. If Mr. Benson comes in as a third person to register, his registration is free. Now, they have, it's set up, if you look at the back of this, that for every two-page seminar registrations from the same city, receive one free seminar for the third person. So Mr. Benson would receive $295 off. So his registration would be free, so his, he would only pay for the flight and the hotel room being the third register. So it's kind of weird, you know? We had two, and now if we get the third one, it makes it cheaper for the city to send them out there for the registration. If we have six, if three more of you go, two of you are going to pay, and then that third person will have his registration free also.
The way I would recommend, if that's the case, if the council chooses to allow the participants to go, and there are three, that because it's coming out of their individual discretionary funds, that that be split between Mr. Douglas and Mr. Benson, 150 apiece, so that each of them get the benefit of that free slot. Mr. Douglas?
Thank you. I was going to ask, I mean, I was just going to clarify, I had changed some, I saw that there was an opportunity to change some times in my flight to lessen my amount, but I was just going to, I mean, Renee jumped, threw my thunder on that one, but it's around 9:50 or so. But that being, our discretionary funds are only, have been reduced by the last council going out to 1,500. I'm not sure, I think the previous amount, I guess before that, 2010 was in my, correct me if I'm wrong, was it 2,500 or what was the amount that was reduced from?
Mr. Mayor and members of council, it was $1,000, then they raised it to 1,500.
Okay.
So, so you got 1,500 total for the calendar year. But the mayor's suggestion seems, seemed reasonable, but you have, what's the number you're looking at then, if I may inquire?
Yeah, absolutely.
So you can get this handled all at once?
Oh, well, the reason why I was bringing that up is, there's another one that, I know we're budgeted for Washington, and.
I meant for this same.
Oh, yes, but I'm saying, just on that note there, because by going to this here, you have to choose between this one and the one, I think in South Carolina or North Carolina?
North Carolina.
North Carolina. And the way discretionary fairness funds are set up, I guess the amount left over to go towards that would be half the fare. I was going to ask, maybe put us on a study session, to increase discretionary funds to $500 more.
It ain't going to happen.
Well, this raises a new issue, if I may, Mr. Mayor. So really, we ought to address what, what Councilman Douglas wants and what Mr. Benson wants, if we're talking about the one trip. Is that still on the table, or you're not sure now?
Oh, yes, I'm sorry. I didn't mean to mix that up. I was just going to clarify that it was 9:50 and.
It's $950.
Yeah, 9:50. And that, I agree with the mayor, splitting that now. Renee, are you going as well? But yours is, yours is budgeted, though, right?
Right, correct.
Okay.
So we're only talking about the two then? Right, we're not talking about Renee, because his is budgeted, because he's a board member. Well, you only approved 700 last meeting, so you got to adjust that. Absolutely. So what I've got right now is Mr. Benson and Mr. Douglas are both requesting to go to this particular NLC seminar, using their discretionary funds, which they have $1,500 and a calendar year to use. They could split the benefit of having three people go and reduce their costs by 150 each. Mr. Benson, are you requesting 950 as well for your discretionary spending on this event?
Well, I haven't looked into airfares. I guess the hotel rate is fixed, just whatever. Well, I haven't looked into airfares. I guess the hotel rate is fixed, just whatever it costs, but I don't think it's going to exceed nine fifty. I don't know what the airfare is going to be.
Okay, so you're comfortable with nine fifty if the council determines
I think so.
that it's okay at nine fifty for both of you?
As long as that pays for everything.
Well, if it doesn't, then I guess you'll have to come back and request the difference, won't you? I don't know how else to put it to you.
Okay.
So, with that said, Mr. Moreno, did you have something on this topic?
I will make a motion to approve if there be no more discussion.
Okay. Is there a second? Mr. Bullock's seconds. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Make sure you bring back some good information for our residents so that they know you did your duty while you were there. Is there any further administrative business? Mr. Bullock, do you have something?
Yes, sir. Now, this might seem redundant, but at your seat also is a second seminar in Charlotte, North Carolina, Leadership That Leaves a Legacy. That's the big seminar that they do every year, and the cost for that seminar is five hundred and ninety-five dollars, and they don't do that third-person discount on this. This is the one, and just the fact, if you look at the back of the people that are presenting at this seminar, General Shelton, I've heard him speak a couple of times, and until you hear him speak on how you leave a legacy, whether it's in the service or out of the service, him right there is worth the five ninety-five, but then they have three other speakers that are equally as good. But that's for you to think about, and if that's something that you want to do, I would really highly suggest that you do it, because it's a good training for any councilperson. But what I really want to get into, at each one of your places, you will see this team approach to good governance. This was the seminar that me and Steve went to last Friday at CML, Effective Governance and Resource and Skills for Elected Officials. It was excellent. During the next four or five weeks, each one of the topics that came up, I will be making copies of it and leaving it at your places, and you can go through the handouts and the outlines that they gave us, because just if you read this one, and the first line, "Congratulations on being elected," okay, now where's my manual? And they tell you that being elected is the easiest thing you can do. Being a councilperson is going to take a lot of work. So, if you go through that, and the only one you won't see from me is the one on the media, because she put in a lot of different videos of different media events that happened in Littleton. She was a PIO from Littleton, and without those being in it, it's not effective. But Tammy Toulouse from SERSA, the general counsel, she gave a good talk. Jeff Wilson on conflict of interest and ethics was excellent. You'll see that in a couple of weeks. And Amendment forty-one, that's the gift law that says what we can and cannot accept from anyone, and being a home-rural city is a little bit different for us, because we have our own ethics policy in our policy. And the open discussion, you won't get nothing on that, because that was basically give and take with all the people in there asking questions on different topics. But over the next three weeks, I will be leaving this at your seats, so you can go through and actually go and see what Steve and I were presented at this conference. My next thing is, anybody that is going to the Gene Klein luncheon on the twenty-ninth needs to RSVP. As of right now, we have two tables and only three people have RSVP. If you don't plan to attend, please tell Michelle so staff can come to the, there's a lot of staff that would like to go to this, so we don't want to have empty tables, because last Friday night, we were in an event, myself, Dominic, and the mayor, and our table was empty for a lot of the night until our recipient got there with their family. And me and Sean were sitting there thinking, wow, we really look kind of goofy, an eight-man table, only two people sitting there, but it filled up by the end, so it was really nice. I would also like to see if any of you would be interested, before anything's done, taking a tour of Maualhite Greyhound Park, because I'm really interested in looking through it and seeing some of the stuff that is there before it starts disappearing, because, and I'd like to see if anybody else is interested in getting with staff, and we do a daylight tour, we're going to have to have lights on, because there's no electricity over there, but is anybody else on council interested in doing that tour?
Yes, I want to attend.
Okay, so we have, okay, that's about seven people. So, I will see if I can get with staff and see if we can put together a tour and make sure it works with everybody's calendar. And I got a compliment today from neighbors around the park, that Pioneer Park is looking absolutely great. They're saying every one of the ball fields look like Coors Field, the park, the flowers, the grass, the parking lot, everything looks just absolutely spectacular. So, I'd like to send this out to the park and rec staff and let them know that they, if all the parks are looking like Pioneer Park, then we're way ahead of the game early. Thank you.
Mr. Benson?
Anything on the foreclosed property ordinance that we've been talking about for about two years?
Mr. Benson, we have put an initial report together. The challenge is the queue as we try to fill up these new study session formats. We're probably looking at June at this point.
June.
If it's, if council is interested in having us try and adjust things, we can try and bring it forward sooner.
You know, one other matter I wanted to bring up, I've asked Mr. McBroom about how much we spend on fireworks. I guess the number comes back twenty thousand dollars. I know we get into a lot of arguments about five hundred dollars here, a thousand dollars here. This is twenty thousand dollars. It's like taking two hundred, hundred-dollar bills, setting them on fire, and shooting them up in the air. I know everybody wants to see fireworks that simulate the bombs bursting in air at Fort McHenry in the War of eighteen twelve, but it's twenty thousand dollars. What else could we do with twenty thousand dollars, Mr. City Manager?
Put you in the closet.
Could we do anything, could this city do anything with twenty thousand dollars besides burn it up in the air?
Absolutely. There are a number of different uses for twenty thousand dollars.
And what if, do we have a contract that requires us to spend that? I know Cronky puts in thirty thousand, we put in twenty thousand. Are we obligated by contract to do that?
The twenty thousand dollars that's set aside to pay our portion of that fireworks show was budgeted. Based on the approved budget, we have entered into a contract with Cronky Sports Enterprises to help pay for that fireworks show this year. My suggestion would be to make that part of your comments as part of the budget, the budget discussion for the twenty thirteen.
Obviously, if we're contractually obligated to do it this year, then we're going to do it. But it's just something to think about in the future. We spend a lot of time arguing about some five hundred dollars here, a thousand dollars here. This is twenty thousand dollars. They're really, it just gets burned up. I don't know. I don't think we have enough money that we can burn.
I have some comments on that, Mr. Benson. Let me tell you, as far as when the city outlawed fireworks, part of that reasoning was that they would control the fireworks display and offer the public a place to come and enjoy that holiday as a city event, rather than having the risk on the street within our neighborhoods. So, I noticed in the past, they've done away with the Halloween event that went on over at the rec center for the youth in our community. They've done away with the Easter event that was there for the youth in our community. There's not much left to take away, and that is truly an event that is there for the benefit of the taxpayer. Not that there isn't other things that we could spend twenty thousand dollars on, but if we want to nickel-and-dime ourselves down as a community to where we're going to save as much as we can by taking away those type of things that have been near and dear to many of the citizens' hearts, I think we can go much further than twenty thousand dollars. So, I have, I want that to remain, it's like our rec center. That is a service provided to the community. It's a service that the community has been used to for a long time. If this council wants to change that as a body, I don't have a problem with that. But in concept, that is why we have an ordinance against fireworks in our neighborhoods, because we provide them with a show. Just to answer some of your comments.
Well, I wonder if Cronky would go ahead and put on their fireworks show if we didn't contribute twenty thousand. What do you think, Mr. McBroom?
To be honest, Mr. Benson, I don't know enough about those negotiations in years past to know how critical the cities...
It's just something I wanted to bring up for people to think about. Like I said, we argue about five hundred-dollar, a thousand items, nickel-and-diming, and here's twenty thousand dollars. Just think about what we're doing the next time we get into an argument about five hundred or fifty dollars or a hundred dollars or whatever. That's all I wanted to say. I'm not going to make a motion or anything of the sort.
Well, I'm glad you brought it up, because I would have to say, you know what, your metro district puts on one heck of a nice display for the residents within your area, and I think it's great. I want them to keep doing it. And would you recommend that if they spend five thousand dollars out of their funds, that you would have a problem with that as a neighbor within that subdivision to stop doing that, to save the five hundred dollars for the metro district? I think it's apples and apples.
I'm sorry, I didn't understand your statement.
My statement is, is that your metro district provides the area in which you live a Fourth of July celebration, including fireworks, which I think is appropriate given the holiday. Would you recommend to save, if they're spending five thousand dollars on fireworks, would you recommend that they not do that, to save the five hundred dollars in the metro district to go elsewhere within the metro district?
Well, it's not five hundred dollars. It's a lot more than that.
Well, I'm just saying, that costs relative.
Yes, I would definitely support that.
Okay, I just wanted to ask, because I personally think that that holiday deserves a community environment, and I'm supportive of continuing with our fireworks display as it currently is. Mr. Bullock, you had comments?
Yes, Mr. Benson, I don't understand your reasoning on this nickel-and-diming, when you're nickel-and-diming. The next thing I'm going to hear from you is probably the parks, our two community gatherings in the park, that how much they cost and what we need to get rid of those two, because it's costing the city money. There's such a thing as tradition in the city, and if you've ever looked at the park before, when it was Fairfax, or now at Rapid Stadium, it's filled up on the Fourth of July. People come from all over the metro area, from all over the state, to watch our fireworks display, because it's one of the best. Now, for, if it's something that you don't feel that, you feel that they're spending money that is wasteful, don't go.
I don't.
Because I'm going to tell you, it's going to bug you the whole time you see those fireworks going up in the air, that you're just counting dollar signs. But you go out there and look at the faces of some of them kids, and some of the adults, and even look at my face. I don't even know how you fixed your mouth to put this together, but I would appreciate if you never, ever, ever bring this subject up again, because this is a tradition in Commerce City, and it's a tradition that we want to keep. And if you have something that you want to substitute it with, I suggest that you go do it, but don't talk about taking away more from us than that we have.
Well, let me just say that I don't go to the fireworks. When those, I leave the Fourth of July celebration before the fireworks start, because they're just not of much, I think about the money that's going up in flame and smoke in the air, and it's just not interesting to me to watch that waste of money. And I will, of course, bring up almost anything that I'm interested in, Mr. Bullock, as you know, in the future. I'll probably bring this up at the budget discussion, but I know there's probably not going to pass. I'll bring it up anyway.
And you know what, Mr. Benson, I will have to tell you, I respect your opinion, and you're welcome to bring your opinion up any time.
Thank you.
Just be prepared for
I understand.
the discussion. Thank you for, thank you for your comments.
I'm sorry?
Thank you for your comments.
Okay.
You have anything further? One more item?
One more item.
Okay, go ahead.
Yeah, I know we've gotten several communications about the noise problems at the, if it is a problem at that event center. And I, Mr. Bullock, can you state what your experience was about two weeks ago when you went by there?
I can tell you what my experience was two weeks ago and three weeks ago. I've got noise complaints the week before the Fireman's event over at the...
Event Center?
No, where did the Fireman?
Edawise.
Edawise Club. And I left Edawise Club with my wife and went right over to the event center. I sat by the fence. I sat in different spots in the parking lot. I even parked right by the door and watched people come out to smoke. I did not hear any noise, except when they would open the door to come out, and it wasn't that loud. The week before, when I got a noise complaint, I did the same thing, and I went to the event center. And I had no, but the funny thing, two police officers were in the lot the night of the big event they had, and both of them had been there for some time, because it was such a big crowd, and neither one of them could hear any noise coming through the wall, and they were sitting right next to it. And so, I'm puzzled, and my wife kept telling me, I need to go get the person that's complaining and bring them over here and see what they hear, because nobody could hear anything. And I'm puzzled at what they are hearing, because I parked right back by the fence where the house would be to see if maybe the noise traveled. And there was nothing back there. There's nothing. The only time you could hear anything was when they would open the door to come out, and it wasn't even bad then. And this is two weeks in a row. And so, I'm really, the next time I get this complaint, I'm going to go get the complainant, and we're going to sit out there and see if she actually hears things, or if she just knows an event's going on, and that's the case of it.
Well, you know, that's, I was, that's why I'm puzzled about these complaints. I mean, you got an email, as we all did, I guess right in the middle of that event at Edawise, about eight forty-five at night. You went over there, and that's the situation that you found. There were two police officers over there. You couldn't hear anything. I'm just wondering, what is going on here? Because I had a, at least a tendency to believe some of these complaints up to a certain point, but after hearing what you have to say, I can't imagine where they're coming from, why somebody wants to make this stuff up.
I have a suggestion.
Because I know you're not deaf, Mr. Bullock, and if you can't hear anything, it means that there's no noise getting out of that building. Now, if it was me over there, there might be a lot of noise getting out, and I wouldn't be able to hear it, but I know that you don't have a hearing problem.
I have a suggestion.
I just, I don't know what's going on, because we continue to get these complaints, and yet they don't seem to have any basis whatsoever.
I have a suggestion. Could we get a list of the events that are taking place over at the event center, so that the council has the time and the event, the day of the event, so that council members can make their way over there and observe for themselves without having to respond to a complaint, and just see the environment that we're dealing with, so that we're more adept and able to make a decision concerning the noise complaints that are taking place, without discrediting any of the complainants?
Yes, I believe we can do that.
I think that would be good. And then that way, the council members that have concerns or doubts can go over and personally observe on any of those given... or doubts can go over and personally observe on any of those given events to see what the noise levels are like. Thank you. Is that all you have, Mr. Benson?
It's all that I'm gonna bring up at this time.
Thank you. We appreciate that. Mr., Mr. Douglas?
Uh, yes, thanks. Landmark Academy is doing their spring luau on April 27th, and I was gonna ask if we could donate a foursome of golf, the Buffalo Run, for their event. They usually give things out for tacky tours, all kinds of different, just to get people there and, and costume, if, if I get council's approval for that.
Anyone on council have a problem with that? With that request of giving a foursome of golf to Landmark Academy?
And King Supers as well, they're, they're gonna donate 250 hot dog buns and some other things as well, so.
With that being said, Mr. Douglas, considering that we had the folks come in from Adam City High School tonight with a formal request, maybe we should allow them a foursome of golf to auction off to help raise their funds for their event as well.
I agree.
Does anyone on council have a problem with that? You have some direction there? Anything further, Mr. Douglas?
Um, I was gonna ask, well, Chris is gone now. They can look into, some studies have been done around collector tanks from wells in production, or after production, I mean, they're producing wells around the collector tanks like the one we see throughout the city here, and in, you know, and around Commerce City, the effects of lowline gas, if they're, you know, what the study is on that?
Okay.
Thanks.
Councilwoman Elliott?
This is just merely a suggestion, kinda going back to these requests of staff, last-minute choices to maybe attend a seminar, a trip, whatnot. We put staff in a very difficult position, having to make quick decisions. I think that if we're going to request anything, and especially of our colleagues as well, that we, you know, really try to put that together so that there isn't that debate and going back and forth, because this is why our meetings go so long. I mean, to be quite honest, and I just, yeah, I had to state that, going back to the fireworks. You know, this is something, it's, it's, it's important to you, and I understand that, and I'm, I'm in agreeance with that. However, I really feel that this is something that should be brought up, you know, at our, at our spring, or I say spring, but our workshops, our budget workshops, or maybe something that, that we can discuss prior to bringing this, you know, on the floor, again, unprepared, going back and forth. And, you know, maybe stepping back and looking at, at this from a resident's point of view, it might be, you know, one of those things that, well, gee, what else are they gonna take away from us? I mean, so many cities, you know, have had to cut back on a lot of their 4th of July events, and so, to say that we're just going to nick $20,000 with, just because of the simple fact that it's considered a wasteful amount of money for an event that, that not just our residents, but several, several other people around the metropolitan area enjoy as well. So, I just wanted to bring that up. I just think that these are things that we really just need to maybe discuss prior to bringing them to the floor and trying to debate and make a decision on that at the 11th hour. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. McLeod?
I wanna thank Ms. Elliott for bringing up, bringing up those comments, I had similar thoughts. Regarding the, the duration of meetings, and I'll use the example of the fireworks discussion from tonight. We've, we've gone over this a million times. I mean, we put, as Ms. Elliott said, we put everyone in an awkward position when we throw these things that we know are gonna be controversial, or we know are gonna require more than five minutes of discussion out there. The purpose of administrative council business, as we've talked about on several occasions, is to bring up things that are reasonably succinct, that require council input to move ahead on, but shouldn't, shouldn't be an ad hoc debate on the subject. So, I think if we were to look at how you approach, how I would suggest we approach a discussion like your suggested fireworks change, you would ask council's support to put an item on a future study session to consider whether or not the expenditure makes sense. And if council says yes, that's a great idea for a study session, then it would show up on a study session. We wouldn't spend 20 or 30 minutes debating fireworks ad hoc at the end of a long night. We've been here since 5 o'clock tonight. When we have an idea about something that we wanna solve for, we shouldn't try and solve that here at 10 or 11 o'clock at night during administrative council business. We should say, I have an idea, I think there's a problem, and we should get council support to pursue that problem, whether it be a study session or request an offline meeting. We need to put something together that's substantial and then have a structured discussion around it. In the same way as Ms. Elliott talks about travel. You know, when we, when we retooled the travel policy a year or so ago, we actually talked about putting together a request form. If you wanna go and use your money, it, you fill out 10 boxes, and we don't have a debate at the, you know, at the end of a meeting or an ad hoc session. You literally say, here's where I'm going, here's what it's gonna cost, here's what I wanna use. I mean, again, it's, it's about respect. It's respecting each other's time, it's thinking before you show up at a meeting, it's respecting our staff who are here for a, a long, long day. And, you know, it's, it's simple. I don't, I don't think we have to overcomplicate this stuff, but, you know, thank you for bringing that up. I had the same, same concerns.
Thank you, Mr. McLeod. I wanted to bring up the similar type of, of thing. It's, you know, we hear about time, it's this council that controls the time of these meetings. If you wanna go into discussion and you wanna talk four times on one item, and you wanna have your conversation go a half hour each time, then you're controlling the length of these meetings. It's not me as the person running the meetings that's controlling the length, because I'm gonna allow the council, they have as much authority as I do to make their comments. It's up to this council to control the length of their comments. I think you can get most of what needs to be said out in a, in a short comment rather than dragging it out and reiterating it four or five times on one issue. Mr. Benson, did you have something further?
Regarding the travel, I just got this in my packet tonight. I think I got an email about it last week after our council meeting, so I don't know when I'm supposed to bring it up, before I know about it, or should I wait two weeks to bring it up, which would be two weeks before the event? I brought this up at the first opportunity after I got
Understand.
Notification
Understand.
Of this workshop. I mean, I don't know what else I'm supposed to do, but I'm sure that somebody will find something wrong with it no matter what, but.
I
And to get, you know, on the fireworks issue, oh, I just, I just brought up an idea. I didn't ask for there to be a study session, I just said, think about this. I never got an opportunity to say I wanna have a study session on it. Everybody was very negative about it, I appreciate that. Just think about it. That's all I was asking people to do. Other people went on talking and talking forever and ever about that issue, not me.
Mr. Benson, my comments weren't solely directed at you. I, all I was trying to say is it's the council as a whole that controls the time of these meetings
I understand.
Through conversation. I don't wanna rehash the fireworks or rehash the travel
I don't wanna get into an argument up here with anybody.
If there's
Just say, think about this.
If there's no further council administrative business, we'll get into reports. Everybody okay with that? Mr. City Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just three brief items. First and foremost, in your city manager update tonight, we have some, some guidance regarding the Denver City Council, Commerce City, City Council lunch that's planned for Thursday. We are suggesting that you arrive about 11:15. We are setting the room up to allow for the, the social nature of the event, and we're encouraging that you kinda split up and spread yourselves out at the six tables, I'm sorry, the five tables that will, that will be set up. Also, it was, it was not our understanding that this would be a spouse-type event, so we did not invite Denver City Council spouses, so we've also not made arrangements for any of your spouses to attend the event either. So, again, we've got some, some instructions. We sent out an email earlier today that listed who we've heard from in terms of Denver City Council as to who's planning to, to be there. Also, in this week's update, we did include an oil and gas update that has several different updates in it. One is regarding the meeting that city staff had with residents last week. I did receive word from a resident who attended that asked us to make a minor correction to that part of the, the update, and we'll be posting an updated version probably sometime tomorrow. We also included an update on the governor's oil and gas land use group that met, so we hope that'll be helpful. And then finally, because we're, we just finished the end of the first quarter of 2012, there was discussion tonight about council's discretionary funds. We're gonna start sending out on a quarterly basis an update to you of the status of your discretionary fund balances. That way, you're able to plan your expenditures throughout the rest of the year. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Attorney?
I don't have anything to report. The only question I have for council, did, did the council decide how long you wanted this trial period for study sessions? We're gonna, you're gonna make a motion, I think, to say how long you wanted this trial period. I mean, assuming you wanna do that, otherwise it'll be indefinitely until you tell us differently.
Does the council like to, to make a motion to limit the trial basis of the study session? Councilwoman Carson?
A motion to extend the trial basis for study sessions to six months to be reevaluated by staff and council at the end of six months. Is that sufficient, Mr. Gavine?
Right.
Okay. Mr. Teeter?
I'll second that.
A motion and a second to go with the six-month period of time on the study sessions and have it brought back to discuss. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried.
Okay, thanks. I don't have anything else. Thanks.
Okay. In my reports, I had a meeting at the Stout Street Foundation this, this last week, toured the facility, talked to a lot of the people that are participating with the foundation and the program. I was, I was pretty impressed with how they're, how they're operating over there, and I would recommend that the council take some time to go over there, tour the facility. They, they really get a bad rap for, for what they do. They do a lot of good, and a huge portion of the people that are in their program are walk-in participants, and it's to help them with, with alcohol abuse, controlled substance to get off, to get off of those type of, of, those type of vices. And they are required to work a minimum of eight hours a day. They are required to also work at the facility. They, they have to wash their clothes, do the, make, make, take care of their room. They go out supervised to, to help, do community-type service, to work, and there are employers within our community that employ them, roofing companies and such, and there is a, a team leader that goes out with them. And then, for anything that they don't do, if they, if they don't make their bed, if they don't do this or that, they get so many hours accumulated, and every Sunday, they have to sit in a church pew for that amount of hours, and some of them have to sit for eight hours at a time. They're not allowed to watch TV, they're not allowed to, to do anything except sit there and reflect on why they didn't get their chores done. And this program is a two-year program. They have no violent crime offenders in their facility, and they're there, and they, they have the ability to help within our community as needed. But to get a full idea of what they do, I recommend that, that the council members go over and participate with a tour and talk to some of the folks that, that are involved with the program. I think it'll change your mind on the facility. Went to Rotary, myself and Dominic were there. Dominic was the Rotarian of the day, and he had, had the program, it was the state treasurer he brought in to speak on behalf of the state. And apparently, the state has the same issues as all the other local municipalities and the counties and everything else right now in this, in this tough economic time. But it was a great presentation, and you can be proud of Dominic. He, he did a good job and represented the city well as the Rotarian of the day. Most of the city council went to a meet and greet hosted by the city of Brighton. They had us out and helped with relationship-building opportunities and talked about collaborative efforts that Commerce City and Brighton can work towards on our boundaries together. And I thought it was, it was a very nice gesture, and I appreciate Brighton inviting us out and working towards the betterment of that, of that separation between our two cities. Then I came here for Commerce City's Business Development Summit. There was fair to good participation this year, I think, to, to, to say. I wouldn't say it was great participation, but it was fair to good, and hopefully, we got a lot of good comments out of that. I, I was reading through them, and staff can compile and let us know where we go and what direction. I think the biggest issues that the, that came out of that business summit, concerns from the businesses were signage ordinances and how signage works, as well as weed ordinances and things of that nature, and pressure from our community development department. Then myself and Renee and Dominic also attended the 26th Annual Metro Mayor's Commissioners' Youth Award banquet at the Adams County Golf Course. We sat with the, the young lady that was before us that, that moved on to the next level of the MM-CYA event, and we got up, took some pictures with her when she was awarded her plaque, and we'll make sure Mr. Bullock has those pictures, he can make sure he can email them to the city so that you guys have them. But it was, it was a, a good event for a good cause, and there, we did have the three of us there representing the city. I also wanted to ask about Bell Creek. That's something that I slipped past on administrative council business. Are we getting anywhere? I continue to get phone calls with the process, and I wanna make sure that we get something up there. This council gave, gave staff direction to do something in an emergency manner, and every week that goes by, it just starts frustrating me more that there's not been some type of deterrent for what's going on over in that, in that area.
Mr. Mayor, we do have a weekly update included in this week's update. Really new information, I think, might have been something Mr. Clemens mentioned last week, which is the additional police patrol in that area. We also do have it scheduled for the May 14th study session because it will require the expenditure of some city funds that worked previously budgeted, so we wanted to present that to council, present the options, and make sure council was supportive of spending the money.
Have you, or anybody, any of the staff contacted the folks in Bell Creek to let them know what, what the process is, where we're at in the process, that there's more police presence, and that this will be coming forward on a study session on the 14th, so they understand where we're at with it and are comfortable so that we don't get the, the phone calls constantly, that nothing's been done?
Well, it's my understanding that Mr. Clemens is staying in regular contact with Mr. Vinsel, who's indicated that he's the neighborhood representative. We'll certainly make, make sure
Would you follow up on that, please, and make sure? So that, so that we're all on the same page, 'cause I get calls, I just got a call this last week again, and I just wanna make sure that everybody's on the same page so that they know what's going on and they're comfortable with it.
Absolutely.
Okay, and then another thing I wanted to bring up is, we had talked about softball teams for the city. I know that the street department put together a softball team, and wanna make sure that the city is participating in those type of employee extracurricular events, since we're the owners of the facility, and we encourage our employees to have time together to bond outside of their work environment, to, to help build morale within the community, within the city proper. our employees to, uh, have time together, to bond outside of their work environment, um, to, to help build morale within the community, within the city proper. Okay, would you look into that, please? Thank you. That's all I have in my report, is there anyone on council that would like to add to that report? Councilwoman Carson?
I don't wanna add to the report, I just wanna tell Mr. McBroom congratulations, um, and thank you for taking the position when council offered you the interim position, thank you very much for stepping up there, and thank you for taking this.
Thank you. She's right.
I noticed that the, uh, park at Gifford Drive in Monaco, looks to me like it's been completed. It looks nice, and I think staff should commend for it.
Thank you, Mr. Teeter. Um, as well, congratulations, Mr. McBroom, uh, we look forward to good things happening in this community, that, that start with you. Um, if there be, Mr. Douglas?
Uh, thank you. Um, I got surprised last week at my job, I got selected, um, for 2011, um, Community Service Award, um, for all the things I've done, I mean, I've done a lot of things the last eight years, I didn't think it would add up to getting that nomination, but, the reason I bring it forward, I, I get to, um, select some, uh, nonprofit, uh, the amount of $500, I'm gonna split that up, so I was gonna ask staff if you can give me a list of, of the nonprofits we have here, so I could, um, take a selection from that.
Congratulations, Mr. Douglas.
Thanks.
And, uh, I have one last thing, I just found out that I'm gonna be a grandfather for the first time.
Uh-oh.
If there be nothing further to come before the city council, uh, we are adjourned. No, we do not have an exec session. Huh? I am getting old, and you know what? Thank goodness, it's my oldest son, instead of my youngest daughter, that's all I can say about it.